I'm going to call the meeting to order. Please take your seats. So this is night two, hopefully two of two for the 2019 Hopkin- Hopkinton Annual Town Meeting. Once again, counters have been assigned under the direction of our deputy town moderator, Ellen Rutter, and I've been informed that it's her birthday, so on three, let's say happy birthday, Ellen. One, two, three. Happy birthday, Ellen!
Thank you.
A reminder about the bounds of the hall. Non-voters should have a paper pass seated on the first few rows on my right. Media members sit in the front row center. No standing in the aisles during the meeting, other than to address the meeting. No eating or smoking. Only registered voters are entitled to sit in the voting areas of the hall, which represent all of stage left, all of stage center, and stage right behind the yellow tape. So if you're a registered voter, you should be in those sections of the hall. We have a quorum. Anyone who wants to speak to the meeting should rise, come to a microphone, and ask to be recognized. When you're recognized, please speak into the microphone so that you can be heard. Only those who are recognized can speak, and they should stop when asked by the moderator. Presenters of articles will have three minutes to make their presentations; other speakers will have two minutes to speak, unless the moderator allows an extension of time. A speaker may have a second opportunity to speak only when others have had a chance to enter the discussion. All questions go through the moderator; no debating. Please do not stand other than to address the moderator or to vote, and as always, no clapping nor shouting in the hall. If you're proposing an amendment, please state it at a microphone; it must be written legibly and presented both to the moderator and to the amendment desk at the back of the hall. Please be respectful of meeting members' times, and have your amendment ready as quickly as possible. Okay? With that, we're ready to begin this evening, and we're now on Article 25, Purchase of a Ladder Truck. Board of Selectmen, Ms. Wright.
The Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Capital Improvements Committee.
Capital Improvements Committee recommends approval.
And now, Mr. Manning for Appropriation Committee.
Article 25, Purchase of Ladder Truck. We move the motion as written in the warrant articles and motions document. Essentially, this is $1.2 million, general fund borrowing. It will require a ballot vote, and this is replacement of the existing 1999 ladder truck that was purchased, used in 2016. The existing ladder truck has limited clearance on the back end to the roadway during change of grade situations. It is excluded debt, by the way.
Before I ask the fire chief to come forward, indulge me for one minute, I forgot to mention that in terms of timing for this evening, I would like to conclude the meeting, I would like to conclude all of the articles this evening, if at all possible. And so, if I believe around 11 o'clock that we can reasonably finish shortly after 11 o'clock, I would like to have the meeting continue. If it, as we approach 11, if it becomes clear that that simply isn't going to happen, then we'll follow last night's protocol, and we'll conclude this evening's session with the article that is under consideration at 11 o'clock. Okay? With that, Chief Slaman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, everybody, for this opportunity. Three years ago, I presented a revised capital plan to the town meeting. The plan solved for our need of a ladder truck. It also downsized our pumper fleet by one pumper. The solution involved the purchase of a ladder truck with a pump, which is known as a quint. And Josh, if I can just have the slide up top. I reported that this used ladder would be a great proof of concept prior to asking town meeting for over a million dollars for a new piece of equipment. And then finally, in that meeting, I asked you all to realize that purchasing a used piece of equipment, especially in the range that we were looking at, which was going to be quite an older one, it ended up being a 1999, that we needed to realize we would need to replace it in a reasonable amount of time, and I said probably five years. So tonight, I'm asking for support in the purchase of a new ladder truck. I'm reporting to you that the concept, a quint, which is up on the screen, I'm hoping. A quint carries fire hose, it has a water tank, it has a pump, it has ground ladders and aerial ladders, and it allows us to do multiple purposes. Its big advantages is, in a town like ours, when you have limited resources, we can be on one piece of equipment and accomplish many tasks. Josh, if I could go to the next slide? So in addition to replacing a piece of equipment that's 20 years old, the new engineering has quite a few advantages I just want to bring to your attention. The maneuverability on the new engineering can turn in a radius of 36 feet, nine inches. And the one that we purchased 20 years ago was actually very advantageous to turn. It turns in about 40 feet, and it had an axle that actually assisted in that. But the new technology really gives us a chance to get in cul-de-sacs that were never even designed for a ladder truck to turn in. It has, as it mentioned in the finance report, the increased angle of departure. The one flaw in the ladder that we purchased is it has six degrees clearance on the rear end. So in a town like ours with a lot of change of grades, when we're entering hills, parking lots, that have angles that switch rapidly, the back of the ladder truck can bottom out earlier than what a current NFPA standard would be of 10 degrees. Also, the improvements are the outriggers. Josh, if I could just have you go to the next slide? Here's an example of our existing ladder truck. The outriggers reach about 17 feet, six inches out. Some of the newer technology that we're going to look at is they build a ladder truck that can jack inside of 12 feet. We're going to examine whether we can work that in Hopkinton. It will do almost the exact same as a heavy-duty ladder like we have will do, yet it will fit in some narrow roads, it will fit in a parking lot. When we go to some of the facilities, large buildings, the parking lots are full, and we have very limited place to set up. So on the next slide, Josh, you'll see some of the examples. So that's only a 12-foot jacking setup. That can get set up in a driveway. Believe it or not, everybody thinks of a ladder truck for tall, large buildings, but we use it quite a bit. Its primary task is residential fires, to open roofs, to access high areas. We need to get in close in a driveway. There's limited width to set up, so if we can pull to the side and get the jack on the ladder side on a hard surface, it will work well. So that's, our existing ladder truck has some challenges with that. Also, just some of the other advantages is the water tank. The most ladders from 20 years ago started with 300 gallons of water when they were a quint. Ours has 500. That was one of the largest ones back then, and the newer versions have 650 gallons of water. And again, being a multipurpose, that allows us to show up, have hose lines and water, and begin a fire attack, and also have the option to make a rescue, depending what the priority is that the group finds. And then finally, with new pieces of equipment, there's warranties that come with it. Having a 10-year cabin body structure warranty, 25 years on the aerial, 10 years on the waterway, and 15 years on the stabilizers and torque box. I know that's a lot of mumbo jumbo, but in a 20-year, the ladder truck we have today, it's a nice ladder truck, but I can have the torque box go tomorrow, and I don't even know if I can fix it, and the price would probably be more than the value of the ladder. So those are just kind of the risks that we weigh when we ask, okay, can we afford to continue on with an older piece of equipment? Or what I'm asking for is, our staffing model is changing. We have the staff where we can move an engine and ladder together to significant calls and get the tasks done that we need with the right piece of equipment. And it, the timing is really good for us to move forward in this purchase. So I'm asking for your support in the ladder. I know it's a lot of money, but I see the value for us and that it will give us over the next 20 years, and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Hello, wish to be recognized, Bill Simpson. A three-pronged question for this purchase. Number one, it feels like for this single-unit machine, as glamorous as it is and well-equipped, I hope you can hear me better, 1.2 million seems more than a bit high. It seems quite high. I could see it being like $700,000 or $800,000, more than 40, 50 percent more. The other two parts of the question, they aren't as big, but what will become of the existing ladder truck? It's still functional. Will it be turned in towards some value to this? Will it be kept as an auxiliary unit? Or will it be donated to a smaller, poorer town or some such thing? And the third thing is, I have to ask this question. Why do I see fire trucks like this piece of equipment, at a million dollars supposedly, running up and down the street daily because somebody's cat is stuck in a tree, or, you know, the chickens got out and someone, a dog got hit by a car? I can see the ambulance and all that, but I'm constantly seeing these very expensive units racing up and down the street daily, winter and summer, answering things that don't have anything to do with fire or high-level emergency. Thank you.
Chief?
Sure. So thanks for the questions. I think I hear all three of those questions quite often, and they're great. The price, I literally worked with, I have a gentleman, Rich Corcoran, is one of my firefighters that really has some expertise in working with vendors and ladder design, and we actually ran a model of what we would say is a standard quote that would be out to bid, and most of the ladders that have the capabilities that this does, a quint, that has the length to reach and the tip load, this is the range that the prices are. I don't know of them running much cheaper. I just, I don't know of them being cheaper. If you've got a ladder with, that didn't have a pump, you might be in a, starting in the $800,000 range, but the pump that we didn't replace that we're combining with this, that starting price is about $680 today. So that, if you did them separate, you would actually spend more money in separate units. The challenge with us is we run them more as a combined unit, so I have to worry about where. But I don't have a second company, especially during the evening. There's only one company on duty, and so they need to have the equipment to do the job. And when they, there are occasions when we're in cars that we're running back to the fire station to get the right piece of equipment. So we have to weigh that. How much, where are we doing? That kind of goes to the question you had for like a fire truck that goes to a medical emergency. I constantly weigh the staff that I have. Do I have availability back at the station? I have my officers piloting right now, because we've just got to the point where we have six or seven on during the day, that we can take the appropriate number of people to the call, and then still have a appropriate number back that could do another call. So that's just kind of like a fine line that I work back and forth, and it's a great question. To show up at a call without the appropriate resources is not a good thing. So that's what makes me move more equipment more often than you're used to seeing. So the existing ladder, its market value right now, it's 20 years old. I feel confident that it would be in the range of about $65,000 to $80,000. I bought it three years ago at $115,000, and the community that sold it, I got out of Michigan, had trouble selling it. They were, it was listed for a lot more money, and I just made a stab-in-the-dark offer, and they just needed to get rid of it. And I, we were so lucky. The quality of this, every other ladder I looked at was six years older, just in the, for the amount of money that we were searching for. Again, it had a little flaw where it runs low on the back end, so, but nobody is in the market, other than a really small community probably, that has a ladder, that wants a ladder, but they're not going to pay very much money for it. There just is not a market value that goes much over $80,000 or $85,000.
On my right.
That would be me. Chief Slaman, Ed Harrow, Eight Spring Lane. Chief Slaman is a wonderful guy. I love him. I have two questions. One, I note that this has a sharper turning radius, and recently you had been sort of invoking driveways to have a considerable width, and I wonder if this will enable that to be reduced. And then, secondly, do you know the book, If You Give a Mouse a Cookie?
I don't know if I want to say yes.
He's going to want a glass of milk? Good luck.
So to the question for the driveway, for Hopkinton, remember, right now, we're a one, we have one engine company on duty tonight. If we have two calls, the next company might come from Ashland, it might come from another community. You want to try to pick a standardized entrance, and that's what we've done for our driveways. Our driveway, I put a template on our ladder truck, but I also check with our surrounding communities, and their, the template is close to their equipment. Some of you that have requested for service, you don't always have Hopkinton show up, so I kind of have to make sure that everybody has a chance to access us that would, may respond. Hope that answers the question.
On my left.
Jeff Doherty, Three Angels Way. Chief, does the planning board have the specs for this so that they don't go ahead and approve a cul-de-sac that they can't turn this truck around in? Or that we have a slope in a driveway or a roadway that is too steep, and they end up approving something that ends up being failure for a piece of equipment? I think I know the answer, but I'm not sure.
So, so the answer is yes. I've probably spent more time at the planning board than any other group that I work with. They have a template. We, last year, we talked about the driveway bylaw that addressed most of those issues. The planning board has been outstanding in working through the issues with me to see. Sometimes the trees are a little bit of a challenge, but other than that, they've been very nice at us getting access to everything.
Great. Thank you. On my right.
Jim Monahan, 305 West Main. Yeah, how often, on all the calls you do, do you actually need the capabilities of the ladder truck? Because I heard many times that you don't want to take a risk of not having, but how often? So we can actually quantify that.
So there's a, there's an interesting range. So the pumper they have right now is very universal. It has medical equipment on it. It's actually one of the few in the state that's rated as a paramedic engine company. It has defibrillator medications, it can do everything. If the crew is out on a call with the ambulance, and they have another medical come in, they can just divert, the police will assist the ambulance, they can start a medical care at the highest level with that engine company. So there's a balance there of how often that occurs. We do 2,500 calls a year. Just a pure ladder request, we send it out, I tried to look at all the data, it probably has 60 requests for an aerial device that we would send to, which are target hazards, known fires, things like that, a year. It averages a response of about 150 calls a year. Because it's 20 years old, I don't try to run it too much, so that's just when there's a second call, and the crew would get into the ladder next after the engine and do a call. In the future, in it being more universal, we will weigh out, we will probably do more than 150 calls a year for it. It may be, end up being the main one that runs out of the downtown station. It may be the one that runs out of the new substation somewhere, and we'll try not to overrun it. We try to balance the loads, but it may then run, it kind of all depends. I hope I'm giving you kind of a feel for the data.
No, 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 actually, that's actually very helpful.
Okay.
And, but it really sounds like it's only maybe 3 percent of the time this fire truck is being used as a fire truck. And I understand it has a lot of other capabilities, but, and, but I think, to me, to spend over a million dollars for something that only 3 percent of the time I need that million-dollar vehicle. And really, what I need is probably a smaller, lower-cost vehicle to meet my needs in most of the time. I don't know what that is. I'm not in the firefighting business, so I'm not here to say what that is, but it just, it just seems like it's, it's way overkill, and I'm sure it's a beautiful vehicle, but it just doesn't sound like we need a vehicle of that capability, except for maybe 3 percent of the time. And maybe if we took our current vehicle, or got a less-used one, and only used it, and then bought another one for a much lower cost, that in the end, we'd get what we need, we'd get an additional vehicle, it sounds like you're short, but in addition, we'd spend less money. So again, it's, I'm just, I can't, I can't stand up here and approve this, because it just doesn't sound like it's a good utilization of our money. But thank you very much.
I think if I can respond, Mr. Moderator.
Go ahead.
Yep. So just, it's a great topic that the speaker just brought up. It's something that we look at, you know, the international, the city managers kind of studies this for us as fire chief. They're kind of the watchdog to make sure we're effective with pieces. And one of their suggestions is, in small communities like this, to combine equipment. There is a higher initial price tag, but again, you can put this one group of people in a vehicle and do multiple tasks versus having multiple vehicles. The flaw with the smaller piece of equipment, sending it out to emergency, is not having the capabilities. So again, I don't expect to run this piece of equipment 1,500 times a year right now. We're going to pilot to see where it would, so that we can run it. Traditionally, Hopkinton hasn't worn out their fire apparatus, you know? So we are getting busier, and we are now going to get to that threshold, and I'll study that as a fire chief, and make sure that it gets its 20 years of service, that we don't run it into the ground. But there'll be some other pieces of equipment that run and share the burden, so I hope that kind of addresses the pros and cons of that question.
On my right again.
B. McNon, Eight Lakes Shore Drive. Chief, I want to thank you for a good presentation in looking at these pictures. Now my brain is starting to worry. Where are you going to start?
So the, the, all the companies that we looked at can manufacture a ladder truck that's smaller than the existing one. It's, and the existing one is really small. It's 39 feet and four inches. So this, the one example you're looking at is 38 feet, four inches. So it'll fit fine in the existing fire station, and I expect it will fit fine in any new-designed fire station.
Okay. I was just worried about getting arrested. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm not going. I'm putting the mic back up. You made it really tight.
Bob Levinson, 13 Smith Road. Excuse me. In my humble opinion, there's a few people in town who have instant credibility based on their years of selfless service. I look around, I see Mr. Manning, excuse me, Mr. Starry, Chief Lee, and I put Chief Slaman in that category as well. He and his deputy Miller do their homework, and if they came up here and asked for 10 trucks, I'd say, okay, I believe it. I'm glad it's only one, Steve, but just, I know the work that you put in, the diligence, and I support this because you're proposing it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Seeing no more discussion, I think we're ready for a vote. All those in favor of Article 25, Purchase of Ladder Truck, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're going to have to take, because this requires bonding, and it's a 2/3 requirement, I predict it's greater than 66 and 2/3 percent, but let's have a standing count. All those in favor, please stand and raise your orange card. I have 15 on the stage. Fifteen. Front left, 30. Front left, 30.
Mr. Moderator. Center front, 34.
Center front, 34.
Left rear, 51.
Left rear, 51.
On the right, 72.
On the right, 72. Three in the cafeteria.
Center rear, 51.
Center rear, 51. Thank you. All right. All those opposed, please stand and hold your cards up. None on the stage?
Mr. Moderator. Center front, two.
Center front, two.
On the right, one.
On the stage right, one. Okay.
Center rear, four.
Center rear, four.
Front left, one.
Front left, one.
Left rear, three.
Left rear, three. 11? So it passes 256 to 11. 256 in favor, 11 opposed. Okay. Article 26, Public Safety Software Upgrade. Ms. Wright for the Board of Selectmen?
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator. Point of order.
What is your point of order?
Can you please remind everyone in the hall that you can only vote when you're sitting within the confines of the chairs where you're supposed to have a seat? You can't be standing in the doorway, standing in the back of the room, leaning against the wall, deciding whether you're up or down. It's difficult to count.
Okay. The counters can also avail themselves of telling people that they must come into the hall and be seated and rise at the appropriate time to have their votes registered. Again, Article 26, Ms. Wright.
The Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Capital Improvements Committee.
Capital Improvements recommends approval.
And Mr. Manning for the Appropriations Committee.
Article 26, Public Safety Software Upgrade. We move the motion as printed in the warrant articles and motions document. Essentially, this is $375,000 from general fund borrowing. Their quest is for the purposes of replacing the town's software that provides incident and records management to law enforcement, fire, and emergency medical services, as well as computer-aided dispatch systems. The cost includes records and data conversions. This software is essentially end-of-life and is no longer going to be supported by the vendor, so it needs to be replaced.
Is there any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it's unanimous, and so we don't need a standing count. Thank you. Article 27.
hall basement, to include additional offices and meeting space.
Is there any discussion?
Ann Matina, forty Eastview Road. Um, I guess, I gotta ask it, didn't we just renovate the town hall after all the flooding? I mean, what is, what is this about, two-hundred-thousand dollars? I've been in the town hall basement recently. It's not in bad shape, it's not, certainly not in the shape it was when the senior citizens used to meet down there. Why do we need to spend another two-hundred-thousand dollars on town hall?
Who would like to address this?
Good evening. Through the town moderator, that's a very good question. The work and the investment done so far in the basement of town hall has been directed at creating an environment and the infrastructure that is required to accomplish what we're asking for. We have invested in improving the drainage, we have invested in making sure that the foundation is solid, we have also invested in making sure that the structure, in terms of the beams and the columns that are in the basement, are functional. What we're asking for today is funding to create office space, as well as meeting space. Some of you who have visited town hall realize that after the repairs that were done, as part of the insurance response to the flood, we lost the kitchen. Town hall staff currently have to use a basement that is really not set up for a staff kitchen. I know the seniors did a great job maintaining that kitchen. Secondly, we also lost meeting space. Room two-eleven, where the planning board used to meet, is no longer available. We have added staff, and thus, we are also looking for office space. You may realize that the second office for the youth and family services department is right next to a bathroom. And thus, in summary, the request before you is taking advantage of the investments that we have done already, making sure that the basement is structurally sound and suitable for office and meeting space. Thank you.
Through you, Mister Moderator.
Okay.
Follow-up question. So, the two-hundred-thousand dollars is for a kitchen and a space for the youth and family services, because their office is not in an ideal location currently?
In, in, if I may, through the town moderator, currently, our storage for files is at the center school, as well as at Fruit Street. We have staff spending more time going to look for files than what we would normally dedicate on an eight-hour day. And part of the program is not only to create meeting space, but also to create storage file, space for our files.
Okay. Again, through you, Mister Moderator. So, I guess I, actually, it's not a question, I guess it's just a statement. So, so, it's for file storage, it's for kitchen, it's for an office. That isn't what the article says, it just says, under the direction of the town manager, and I would not vote for this, and I urge my fellow citizens not to vote for it as well. Thank you.
On my right?
Um, Darlene Hayes, One Third Road. I'm also speaking out against this. A couple things that were said was about town hall being struck, it being structurally sound. Um, I was down there a couple weeks ago, it seemed structurally sound. An office next to a bathroom doesn't seem that big of a deal, and center school's empty, and the part of, one of the reuse committee that I sat on for eighteen months, was that some of the storage of files was gonna go there until a permanent solution comes up, so that's what the building is for right now, outside of the gymnasium for Parks and Recs.
If, if, if I may, uh, through the town moderator.
Go ahead.
Josh, may you please put up the, the plan for the basement? In answer to the question regarding files, there are two buckets of files that we use at town hall. There are files that we require for our day-to-day operations. These are active files. For our efficiency, we need those files at town hall. Currently, as I said, they are at center school and Fruit Street. The second bucket of files are files that we don't use regularly, including materials that were required by law, uh, to archive. Those files are at center school. My understanding of the discussions at the center school reuse advisory term meetings, and its recommendations, yes, the recommendations address the need for storage, file storage. We are a growing community. I believe, based on the need for us to access our files for efficiencies, that we will need both the town hall storage, as well as the center school storage.
On my right?
Uh, Ken Dietz, forty-four Alexander Road. Um, I have, uh, strong concern about storing valuable and needed files in a basement, when previous history has already said it's flooded once. Um, I don't think it's a good idea to keep any kind of document-type files in a possibly wet area. I just disagree with that entirely.
If, if I may, through the town moderator.
Go ahead.
Yes, I agree with you. However, over the last eight years, we have invested in making sure that there is no flooding risk in the basement. We're comfortable now that we can bring back the files to the basement, and there will be no water issues.
On my right?
Marlane Troops, thirty-one Walcott Street. I worked in the basement for ten years, as an outreach coordinator. My question is, there's a, it's, there's a charming jail cell tucked in the corner. I hope when the-
For whom?
For those of us who don't need it. I hope when, if, if this passes, and the renovation is done, that historic things are very nice. That is, I mean, if you don't believe this jail, little jail cell, you've gotta see it. I hope it's not gotten rid of. Thank you.
Yes. And, and again, through the town moderator, let me walk you through the, the floor plan. Yeah, the floor, the floor plan is projected on the screen. If you're starting from your left, the side facing Main Street, you, yes, top left, that's where the jail cell is.
Yeah.
We will preserve that, uh, storage. And similarly, the office that is currently used, um, was previously used by our maintenance staff, is going to be preserved for storage. Then you have the bathrooms, the bathrooms have been repaired. You also have the sun pump, which is also part of our drainage system. Archive storage would be along the wall facing Bill's. We have additional storage, um, towards the boiler room. We have also installed drainage equipment in the boiler room. We're proposing, uh, on the side facing the two vacant buildings, um, or looking towards Walcott Street, a lounge conference room, as well as a kitchen.
So, the jail cell is gonna stay?
Preserved.
Good, thank you.
On my left?
Mister Moderator, Brian Hurd, Elizabeth Road. I move the question, please.
Is there a second? All those in favor of ending debate, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, it's a clear majority. So, we're ready for a vote. Article 27, Town Hall Basement Renovation, two-hundred-thousand dollars. Requires the two-thirds majority, so we need to take a standing count. All those in favor, rise with your orange cards. Thirteen on the stage.
Front left, we have twenty-eight.
Front left, twenty-eight.
Front center, thirty-one.
Front center, thirty-one.
On the right, forty.
Forty on the right. So, I've got one-seventy-five to one-twelve. We're just waiting to see if there are any votes in the, uh, in the cafeteria. Ellen, is there any count in the cafeteria? Okay, all right. So, the vote is one, one-seventy-five to one-twelve. In favor, one-seventy-five, opposed, one-twelve. That is not a two-thirds majority, and so the article does not pass. Article 28, Security Cameras School. Ms. Wright, for the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen rec, Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Can you repeat that into the mic, Claire?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Okay, Capital Improvements Committee?
Capital Improvements recommends approval.
And Mister Manning, for the Appropriations Committee?
Article 28, Security Cameras for the School. We move the motion as printed in the warrant articles and motions document. Essentially, this, uh, well, this is two-hundred-thousand dollars of general fund borrowing. This funds the second half, the final stage of the school's safety plan, that will supply the high school, middle school, and sections of the Loop Road with security cameras.
Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we're ready for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And it's unanimous, and so voted. Article 29, Center School Renovation and Reuse Feasibility Study. Ms. Wright, for the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Capital Improvements?
Capital Improvements recommends approval.
And Mister Manning, for the Appropriations Committee?
Article 28, Security Cameras for the School. We move the motion as printed in the warrant articles and motions document. Essentially, this, uh, well, this is two-hundred-thousand dollars of general fund borrowing. This funds the second half, the final stage of the school's safety plan, that will supply the high school, middle school, and sections of the Loop Road with security cameras.
Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we're ready for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it's unanimous, and so voted. Article 29, Center School Renovation and Reuse Feasibility Study. Ms. Wright, for the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Capital Improvements?
Capital Improvements recommends approval.
And again, Mister Manning, for the Appropriations Committee?
Article 29, Center School Renovation and Reuse Feasibility Study. We move the motion as printed in the warrant articles and motions document. Uh, this is a fifty-eight-thousand-dollar raise and appropriate, uh, to conduct a feasibility study regarding the reuse and renovation of the center school.
Are there any questions? On my right?
Bob Levinson, Thirteenth Smith Road. Um, I'd like to know how this fits in with the previous group. They did, there was a reuse committee, um, I think it was chaired by Chief Flannery. Um, what is this group gonna do that that group didn't for free?
Who can respond?
John Pavlo, Fifteen Ash Street, uh, Reuse Committee, Center School Reuse Committee.
Go ahead.
Um, basically, we did not do structural studies. We relied on old structural studies, um, uh, architecture reviews. Um, we recommended looking at, potentially taking out the nineteen-sixty section and creating two buildings. So, this would, um, further that, and look at the possibility of how best to reuse that lot, including traffic flow, as well as ADA, so making sure there's elevator. Um, storage potentially behind, if we build a new section, so it would be a much more inclusive look architecturally and reuse, with the idea being, how could it, school offices, um, yesterday you heard that, um, we're short of classrooms at the high school, the potential of locating the, um, eighteen-to-twenty-year-old continuing education in the basement with a- That will supply the high school, middle school, and sections of the Loop Road with security cameras.
Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we're ready for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye!
Any opposed? And it's unanimous, and so voted. Article twenty-nine, Center School Renovation and Reuse Feasibility Study. Ms. Wright for the Board of Selectmen.
The Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Capital Improvements.
Capital Improvements recommends approval.
And again, Mr. Manning for the Appropriations Committee.
Article twenty-nine, Center School Renovation and Reuse Feasibility Study. We move the motion as printed in the warrant articles and motions document. This is a $58,000 raise and appropriate to conduct a feasibility study regarding the reuse and renovation of the Center School.
Are there any questions? On my right.
Bob Lovinson, thirteen Smith Road. I'd like to know how this fits in with the previous group. They did, there was a reuse committee. I think it was chaired by Chief Flannery. What is this group gonna do that that group didn't for free?
Who can respond?
John Pavlo, fifteen Ash Street, Reuse Committee, Center School Reuse Committee.
Go ahead.
Basically, we did not do structural studies. We relied on old structural studies, architecture reviews. We recommended looking at, potentially taking out the 1960s section and creating two buildings. So this would further that and look at the possibility of how best to reuse that lot, including traffic flow, as well as ADA, so making sure there's elevator. Storage potentially behind if we build a new section. So it would be a much more inclusive look architecturally and reuse, with the idea being, how could it, school offices. Yesterday, you heard that we're short of classrooms at the high school. The potential of locating the eighteen-to-twenty-year-old continuing education in the basement with a living facility, which would free up two classrooms at the high school. So really taking it to the next step.
Mr. Moderator, even though I can see you, I have to follow procedure here. So it's incremental to the work that this group did. It's building on it, it's extending it, it's not replicating it?
Correct. Our group was charged with getting community input for what...
For the specific functional uses.
Yes, for the uses, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Part of what he said is destroy the 1960s section of that building theoretically. Why would we want to remove part of the building? Is that part of it that offensive to look at? Or is it collapsing or something? Because it costs a lot of money to remove part of a building.
Well, the article is focused on doing presumably an architectural study in order to figure out whether the uses can be accommodated. And so the question about tearing down a part of the building is not germane to this article. Did you wanna...
Yeah, let me try to explain a little bit more. My name's Dan McIntyre. I'm Chair of the Permanent Building Committee. As you know, last year, the Center School Reuse Advisory Team recommended to the Board of Selectmen that Center School remain a municipal facility. And they came to that conclusion for a number of reasons. But one of the main ones is that they did a needs assessment of the town departments and determined that there is a need for more space for the town departments to move into. So the Board of Selectmen, before they accepted that recommendation, they wanted a little more information on what it's gonna cost to renovate Center School for those needs. And they tasked the Permanent Building Committee to do that. So tonight, we're asking for the $58,000 to do that study to determine how much it's gonna cost to renovate Center School, so we can recommend to the Board of Selectmen some detailed information so they can decide whether to accept the Center School Reuse Advisory Team's recommendation or to go some other path.
Thank you. Okay, seeing that there's no further discussion, let's take a vote. All those in favor of the Center School Renovation and Reuse Feasibility Study signify by saying aye.
Aye!
Those opposed?
No!
And it's a clear majority. And so passes. Article thirty, Community Preservation Funds. Ms. Wright for the Board of Selectmen.
The Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
And Mr. Manning.
Article thirty, Community Preservation Funds. We move the motion as printed in the warrant articles and motions document. For the purpose of this article is to ensure CPC funding is allocated for the correct reserves for active-passive recreation, historic resources, community housing, open space. The remaining funds are allocated to budgeted reserves. The sum is $1,157,990, as it's shown on the table on page thirty-four of the Appropriations Committee Report, the total estimated revenues for the community preservation. I just want to make note that we have an updated version. It says, if you look on the screen, or a lot of you have it, it says from fiscal year 2019. It's really from fiscal year 2020, and it has been updated, so the motion is for fiscal year 2020.
Are there any questions about this motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye!
Any opposed? And it's unanimous, and so voted. Article thirty-one, Community Preservation Recommendations. Appropriations Committee, Mr. Manning.
Appropriation Committee recommends this article.
Capital Improvements Committee.
Capital Improvements recommends approval.
Is there discussion?
Wilson St. Pierre, twenty-two Huckleberry Road. I have a question on thirty-one D and thirty-one H, same question. Will Parks and Rec be responsible for maintenance of the dog park and/or the playground equipment? And if so, what is the annual maintenance outlay expected?
You know, procedural matter. I need to have somebody from the Community Preservation Committee actually move the motion first, and then we'll continue with the discussion. Mr. Knickie.
Henry Knickie, Chairman of the Committee. I move the motion as read, please.
All right, we'll continue with discussion. If you, again, if you'd come forward and repeat your question.
Wilson St. Pierre, twenty-two Huckleberry Road. So I'm told I have a response to my email, but for the benefit of everyone else, I'll repeat it. For items thirty-one D, thirty-one H, that's the dog park and EMC playground equipment, will Parks and Rec be responsible for maintaining it? And if so, what is the expected annual maintenance outlay for those?
Jake Olphy from Parks and Rec. Yes, we will be responsible for the maintenance of the dog park. We anticipate maintenance costs between four and $6,000 annually for the dog park, mainly to maintain irrigation, the removal of dog feces, and then general repairs for the dog park. For the playground, we currently budget between five and eight thousand, five and $7,000 in annual maintenance for EMC playground. I would actually anticipate that cost going down with the new playground, because we won't have to make repairs to new equipment for at least the first several years of operation. I hope that answers the question.
Thank you. On my right?
Jim Monahan, three oh five West Main Street. I think, just kind of a basic question here. I mean, we have thousands of acres of parks in Hopkinton. Why do we need a dog park? I mean, we're not, if we're in the city, it's understandable. My in-laws live in Riviera, we need a dog park. Where else are you gonna walk the dog? I mean, we have, I don't know, 3,000 acres of parks, and we're gonna spend $130,000 plus for a dog park? I, so I, that to me just, yeah, there's maintenance costs and all, it just kind of boggles my mind, that's all. Thank you. I, yeah, I can't support this. If, so, I guess the second question would be, if there's an individual item we can't support, does that mean that impacts how we vote on everything else?
As it stands, everything is bundled into one decision here. It doesn't need to be that way, but that's the...
Okay.
Members of the, the registered voters can request that items be separated. And if town meeting agrees to that separation, then separate votes can be taken.
Yeah, I would move that we'd separate this, make it a vote of only one.
Well, you have to be clear as to what you're asking to be separated.
I'm asking that article, this Section D, be voted on separately.
Hold on, we need your name and address.
Jim Monahan, three oh five West Main.
And so, state that again, it's thirty-one D?
Yeah, thirty-one D. Yeah, I'd like it to be considered as a separate vote.
And not thirty-one H? So, okay, you're just referring to thirty-one D. And there was a second to separating...
Should I be reading thirty-one H?
Well, we'll deal with one at a time. So there was a, a motion was made to separate consideration of thirty-one D, and it was seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion to separate thirty-one D? If there's discussion, please come forward and...
Monia Stanton, Nine Ridge Road. I second the motion to separate.
Okay, we, I acknowledge that we have a second.
Were you seconding to separate?
Okay.
Hi. So Stacia Frederick-Crosby, Seven Line Lot Court. We've been through this discussion every year for the last, what, three years now? We're separating this again. If we are separating it, will we be, have the opportunity to vote on it as a separate bounder tonight?
Yes.
Or is this gonna be continued?
Yeah, it simply means that we'll take a separate vote on this item. So it doesn't disappear, it's still subject to an up or down vote.
And then we're gonna have more discussion about this item after that, too, right?
Can you speak more clearly into the mic?
It's okay. Done. All right, fine, we'll separate.
Okay, we'll separate. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Are we ready for a vote to vote on separating this? All those in favor of taking a separate vote on thirty-one D signify by saying aye.
Aye!
All those opposed?
No!
Great. I'm good, but I'm not that good. So those in favor of separating, please stand and raise your orange card. Five on the stage.
Mr. Moderator.
If we could have quiet in the hall.
Center front, thirty-four.
Center front, thirty-four.
On the right, sixty-six.
Sixty-six on the right.
Front left, twenty-one.
Front left, twenty-one.
Center rear, fifty-six.
Center rear, fifty-six.
Left back, forty-six.
Left rear, forty-six. All those opposed, please rise and raise your yellow card, orange card. Eight on the stage.
Front left, thirteen.
Front left, thirteen.
Center front, eleven.
Center front, eleven.
Center rear, eleven.
Center rear, eleven.
Left rear, thirteen.
Left rear, thirteen.
On the right, sixteen.
Sixteen on the right. The motion to separate is two-twenty-eight in favor, seventy-two opposed, and so thirty-one D will be voted on separately. Okay, back to the, to the motion. Any other discussion relating to the motion? And we'll consider items other than thirty-one D at this point.
I'd like to...
On my right, name and address.
Ken Parker, sixty-nine Clinton Street. I move that H get excised as well, to be voted on separately.
Second.
Okay. The motion has been made to separate item thirty-eight H as a separate vote. Thirty-one H. Yes, it was seconded. Any discussion on the motion to separate thirty-one H for a separate vote?
Hi, Dave Paul, Seven Meadowland. This is an inconvenience to the town meeting. I was just wondering why two big items like this are lumped in with a bunch of different ones to begin with?
Well, historically, all of the Capital Preservation Committee, Community Preservation Funds are voted on in aggregate, and occasionally, we have these motions for separation. Okay, seeing no further discussion, we're gonna vote to consider separating thirty-one H from the balance of Article thirty-one. All those in favor of separating thirty-one H, rise and extend your orange card. Well, you know what? Let's do a voice vote first. All those in favor of the separation signify by saying aye.
Aye!
Those opposed?
No!
No good deed goes, no good turn goes unstoned. All those in favor of separation, please rise. One on the stage.
Someone else stand up over here, so if you stood up later.
Mr. Moderator, center front, fifteen.
Center front, fifteen.
Front left, eight.
Front left, eight.
Left rear, twenty-three.
Left rear, twenty-three.
Center rear, thirty-nine.
Center rear, thirty-nine.
On the right, twenty-three.
Twenty-three on the right. Okay, all those opposed, please rise and hold your cards. Ten on the stage.
Left front, twenty-four.
Repeat that?
The left front is twenty-four.
Left front, twenty-four.
Center rear, twenty-one.
Center rear, twenty-one.
Center front, thirty.
Center front, thirty.
On the right, fifty-six.
On the right, fifty-six.
Left rear, 37.
Left rear was how many? 37. The vote to separate does not pass. 178, opposed, 109 in favor. Again, we're back to the main motion on all items within 31 other than 31D. Is there any further discussion on 31 other than 31D?
One question.
Name and address?
Oh, William Simpson, 5 Constitution.
Thank you.
That 11-3 Hayden Row Park, EMC Playground, it seems to me that thing's about five or six years old, and there's a quarter of a million dollars' worth of equipment. Is all the equipment in it that far either vandalized or worn out, that it needs replacement?
I wonder if Parks and Rec can speak to the, both the age and the, um, condition of the equipment in the park.
Hank, I'm Chairman of the Committee. This is something we've been talking about for about three years of, of repairing work at the, uh, at EMC. And the reason it got pushed off for a couple of years is we were trying to be careful of where we were spending money, and we had other projects that had higher priority. However, this time, we really pushed for it because it's a safety issue. Most of, most of the money being spent on this project is actually for a rubberized surface, so the children won't get injured if they fall, and that's really where most of the money's going.
And Hank, how, how old is the park itself? Do you recall?
I can answer.
Uh, at least over 10, 15 years, so it's been around for a while. More like 20.
No, I, I, I can actually answer that. The park's 18 years old.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. On my left?
Todd Sastari, 19 Elizabeth Road. I was just curious, on item F, uh, the Pine Street Fields, the irrigation system, uh, would the Pine Street Fields be in the town water district? And if so, would that irrigation system be subject to the same restrictions as residential irrigation systems?
Who can address that?
Eric Son at 60 Teresa Road. Speaking as a former Water and Sewer Commissioner and a member of the CPC Committee. Currently, the park is slightly in Phase 1 of our well number one. This article would rearrange the park so that it would be out of that Phase 1 and not be interfering with the water system.
Thank you. On my right?
Pat Sikora, 21 Valentine Road. I agree that the equipment at the EMC Park is ready to be replaced. However, I am wondering, since it's a signatory park and it has EMC's name all over it, whether or not anybody approached EMC, uh, to ask them if this, what would be a mere drop in their bucket of money, uh, could be donated to the community that supports them in exchange for their name remaining on that sign?
Techno, please, no clapping. Technically, outside of the four corners of this article.
I object, I think that it's relevant. I mean, if we have a resource within the community that we can use to offset something that we need...
I appreciate that, but it's not, it's not, we, we have no ability as town meeting to go and ask them. And, and so it's outside of the four corners of this particular article. That doesn't preclude other people asking, but not at town meeting. On my left?
I was just going to respond.
On my right?
Hi, Madhu Chandrasekhar, 18 Rocky Woods Road. I just wanted to say, I really appreciate the intention to upgrade the equipment in the park. EMC Park is a high-frequency, high-traff, traffic area for young children and stuff like that, and right now, it's not safe. There are areas roped off because the kids can't play in those equipment, and if it gets an upgrade, it'll be a big help. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Uh, Brian Douglas, 14 Greenwood Road. I appreciate the, the previous speaker's comment around approaching EMC, so maybe I can perhaps ask the question a slightly different way, which is, uh, why have we not approached EMC prior to submitting item H in this particular article?
Also, uh, for the same reason, it's not, really not within the bounds.
Oh, I, I, again, I would object, if we're asking the town to spend $260,000 on something that we did not approach the, the signature name on the park about, it, it feels to me like a gap, but it's almost similar to some things we spoke about last night, whereas we were asking for money and we didn't even have a plan or spoke to contractors about some things, so I, I, again, I would respectfully, uh, object to that assertion. It's a, it's a simple, like, why have we not?
I appreciate that, but we're not here to, to, it's just not part of the business of the meeting. If you object to the expenditure, then you vote, you vote no. If you're in favor of the, of the expenditure, you vote yes. You know, speculating about what an individual or a corporation might or might not contribute is really to no end at town meeting.
I, I respect that, but what I'm asking is, I'm asking, why haven't we not approached them, or have we approached them? That's all I'm asking, is if we have or haven't.
I mean, does the Board of, the Board of Lightroom choose to respond, or no?
Mr. Moderator? Dan Terry, Chairman of the Parks and Rec Commission.
Go ahead.
Um, I, I respect that you're trying to keep this, this conversation within the four corners here, but there seems to be a lot of questions. That park was donated by the Egan family. The EMC name was chosen by them. EMC company doesn't exist anymore in this, in, in the town, it's owned by another company. So we did not go and, and try to seek funding from anyone else, um, but I, and I'm sorry, the, the key point is that it was the Egan family as individuals that, that made the donation to make the park happen.
Thank you. On my right?
Sarah Nathan, 6 Kalala Farm Road. Uh, I'm just here to fully support H for the park, um, regardless of EMC or the name of it. Our town desperately needs this park to be upgraded. All the surrounding parks, um, all the surrounding towns have had their parks upgraded already. They're all ADA compliant, the grounding is safe for all of our kids to go on, um, the material is up to date, so the equipment is not 20 years old, and so it can't no longer be, uh, fixed, and so it's just taken away. And the toddler park isn't necessarily because age restrictions and requirements have changed, it's not really great for toddlers to go on. So a lot of parents in town actually take their kids to other towns, to other parks where they feel their kids can be more safe, um, and I would really love if this could get passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weismanal?
Ken Weismanal, 145 Ash Street. I move the question.
Is there a second? Okay, so we, we will now vote to end debate. All those in favor of ending debate on 31, with the exception of 31D, signify by saying aye?
Aye!
Any opposed to ending debate?
No.
Okay, so we, we have ended debate, we're now ready for a vote on Article 31, with the exception of 31D. All those in favor of Article 31, with the exception of 31D, signify by saying aye?
Aye!
Any opposed? And it's a clear majority. And so passes. So now we return to Article 31D, which represents the $20,000 for the design and engineering of a dog park at 668 Fruit Street. Is there further discussion on 31D?
Yeah, uh, Ken Parker, 69 Clinton Street. How much are we voting for here? Is it 20 or, or, uh, 130?
Oh, excuse me, you're right. You're right, it, uh, it's, it's Article 31D as it's written in its entirety. I shouldn't have, uh, thrown out the $20,000. On my right?
Dale DeAnhe, 25 East Main Street. Uh, where is the park in relation to our, um, water, town water, the wells?
We met with Department of Public Works before we decided on a location at Fruit Street to make sure that the proposed location would not be within a certain legal, um, distance from any of the wellheads, so it should have no effect at all.
Thank you.
A follow-up?
Go ahead.
There was talk of feces, um, having to be removed, so that still doesn't answer the question, how close is it? Across the street, down the street, five miles, two miles?
I, I don't know the exact yardage or, or feet. I was just told, this is an acceptable location.
On my right?
Carol Dever, 47 Chamberlain Street. From my reading of the article, we're spending $20,000 to design it, $130,000 of CPC funds, and $250,000 from a grant that we're getting, so can somebody explain to me what exactly we're going to get for a $400,000 dog, dog park?
Should be clear, it's a $400,000 dog park.
Yeah, but what does that mean?
Is there someone who can speak to, uh...
Sure, Dan Terry from the Parks and Rec Commission, again.
Dan.
So we, we haven't got a, a complete, uh, budget breakdown on this, the, but we, what we do know is that we need to contribute, um, I believe it's at least 20% in order to qualify for a grant, and we have to show that we have funding to be able to complete the project. The funding for this, because I, I think there are other questions about it, um, is, there's a $250,000 grant that we had received before for another location, um, but, but we, uh, did not move forward with that location. We picked a place that was, uh, at, at Fruit Street because it was a little further away from where residences are, um, because people had concerns that, that we're abutters, uh, so this location is, uh, most likely going to be just as you enter the parking area for the fields, maybe a 50 or 100 or 70, or a couple hundred yards before that is about where the location would be. Again, from a funding perspective, $250,000 grant that we, um, would not be able to access any portion of this $150,000 unless we got that grant.
I think part of the question, Dan, is what, you know, what leads to a cost in the neighborhood of close to $400,000?
Uh, the planning and engineering and, and, uh, creating a parking lot and leveling a field and, and, uh, planting the grass and putting in fencing and, and, um, it's not fancy fencing, but it's fencing that would, uh, has kind of a staging area for dogs to go into and come off and onto leash, and then they go into a larger area for large dogs, then another area for smaller dogs. This, this is the recommendation that the Stanton Foundation suggested that we have set aside as, is the sum of $400,000.
Thank you. On my right?
Christine Nerve, 223 Pond Street. I rise in support of the dog park. Question was asked earlier, why we need a dog park, since there are many places that people can walk their dogs, but the park allows dogs to play with one another in a safe way, they can be off-leash without danger of their, uh, causing harm to other people or to themselves. Some of us no longer have children who can enjoy the EMC playground or have grandchildren who can enjoy it, but we do have dogs who could enjoy playing with each other, and I think the amount is, uh, not disproportionate.
Thank you.
Diana Blank, 20 Yale Road. I'd also like to speak in support of the dog park. A dog park is different from other kinds of public lands that we have. Foremost of our state parks and similar type things, dogs actually have to be leashed. If you are being a proper dog owner, you will keep your dog on a leash. In a dog park, the dogs can run free, as, as stated by the previous commenter, um, the dogs can play with each other, it's a safe place so that you're not interfering with, um, other people who are enjoying our public lands in other ways. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandra Safaro, 132 Fruit Street. And we've gone through many stages and phases of different, uh, building opportunities out on Fruit Street, and exactly, um, there's been no specific plans out there, and we're, um, animal lovers ourself, and I'm very concerned about, um, I love animals and dogs, too, and there's a lot of wild animals out there, fisher cats, foxes, um, you just had beavers removed there a couple of years ago. I'd like more specifics on the dog parks, uh, especially the hours run, um, and everything else, and of course, um, a lot of things have been turned down there, like the gulf's course because of the yellow spotted turtles and everything else, so exactly, um, and the schools were turned down there and everything else. I'd like more specifics of the dog park, of where it's going to be set up, in another parking lot, we have enough traffic out there between, um, like, 7:00 and 8:00 in the morning, we can't even get out of our driveway because it's the Daytona Speedway out on Fruit Street, anyone can attest to that, and in the afternoon, it's terrible, and not that a dog park would cause that, but I'd like more specifics of how much, um, this is going to impact. Not that a dog park would will, but I'd like to know where the placement would be, the hours, and more specifics pertaining to the dog park out there for safety and concern, because a lot of things have been turned down in that area, especially the, because the aqua filters are right there.
Okay, let's let Dan respond.
A lot of great questions, uh, so, um, and I'll try to, try to remember most of them, or all of them.
Yeah.
I hope people will help me, though.
Yeah. We've been out there for 40 years, so we've seen everything.
The, the area would be...
Mary Pratt has, uh, God's...
Okay, let's, let's let Dan respond.
Yes.
The area would be, uh, about an hour, an acre of fenced-in area, that's, that's what we had planned before, may, certainly could be smaller than, and it may be smaller than that. Part of what we still need to do is, uh, and it would be fenced in, so, so that, that should be able to, during the dawn-to-dusk hours, that we'd anticipate people being able to use the park, um, that, that should keep the, the, um, I, I guess, the predators away. We still anticipate needing to do engineering, uh, we would absolutely need to adhere to staying out of wetlands, and, and if, if, if we were going to approach them, we'd, we'd need to go through the same permitting process that, that anyone else would. In terms of traffic, I have visited, uh, dog parks with Otis Terry several times, and, um, in, in a lot of different places, and I've never seen more than half a dozen people there at a time, it's, tends, tends to be steady during the day. I appreciate that there's traffic all over town, but I don't think a handful of cars is going to have a major impact on traffic.
Thank you.
Anything else?
On my right?
Dave Paul, Seven Meadowland Drive. Just playing a little bit of devil's advocate here. What is the policy for the customers as far as picking up the feces after their dog? To me, if that's not the case, are we basically, uh, paying a maintenance fee to pick up their feces?
So, the Stanton Foundation, in part of their granting process, has recommended rules. One of the first things we do would be to put up a sign, and we would also provide bags and receptacles, and hopefully, people would read the sign and understand, you have to pick up after your dog. We would then contract, um, someone to come in and remove the dog feces.
Thank you.
Jackie Potenzoni, 12 Wood Street. I just want to say, I live right near the Senate Trail, we walk down it every day. People let their dogs poop on the Senate Trail all the time, don't pick it up. But my question, I came up here as a liability question for Town Council, actually. We're going to own this dog park, it's going to be a Hawkington Dog Park. What is the liability exposure? Children are attracted to dogs, dogs bite, if somebody's bitten in the...
Children are attracted to dogs' bite if somebody's bitten in the dog park, wheel in the dog park. Can the town be sued?
Of course.
Tony Miaras.
Let's start with the question you actually asked, which is, can the town be sued?
Yes.
And the answer is, there are lots of lawyers out there, and I imagine the town could be sued. People can bring suits for all sorts of things. Now, what you actually are interested in is what is our exposure? And happily, there is a statute that allows all owners of recreation land who make it available without charge to be immune from suit. So our exposure is close to zero.
All right, thank you.
Bob Levinson, 13 Smith Road. Speaking as a dog lover, who would show you pictures of our dog, but I know you want to end by 11. While I appreciate the socialization aspect for dogs, I question spending $400,000 for universal pre-K for canines.
Mr. Moderator? Just a clarification on two points about the money involved here.
Yes.
One, while it's, it could potentially be a $400,000 dog park, only $150,000 of it is a request tonight. And two, and I'd ask someone else to help out, this would not affect our tax levy at all.
Understood. On my right?
Nancy Peters, 258 Wood Street. And I have two, well, a question and a comment, please. How much money has already been spent by the town on the dog park would be the first question?
Has any money been, yet been expended on the dog park?
We have not spent any money on this dog park.
Zero.
And the second part is that when this dog park was planned for Hayden Row, there was a plan that was pretty fully developed. And if I recall in that plan, that there was talk about having two fenced-in areas, one for large dogs, one for small dogs. There also were sheds in order to hold equipment, and I believe also that there was a gazebo there so people could sit in the shade. Is that all still part of the plan that's going forward with the dog park?
Mr. Terry, can you address that?
We don't have a plan that's drawn up right now for this particular dog park. That's part of what the funding is for. As far as the dog park that had been proposed in the Hughes property before, there were renderings of a dog park, and I think that might be causing some confusion here, but we didn't have maintenance sheds or anything along those lines.
Thank you.
John Catino, 1 David Joseph. I move the question.
This gentleman?
I'm going to recognize Mr. Simpson first.
A technical question. Does that dog park at four tenths of a million dollar value and an acre in size have a clay, I'll call it a seal, a clay cap like a dump has over it? Because like it or not, dog urine itself is a toxic waste.
Mr. Terry, are you able to comment on that?
I don't, there's no intention to have a clay cap to it, and in casual conversations that I've had with the Board of Health, they suggested that dog urine, once it seeps through a few inches of soil, is, really doesn't have an effect on what's underneath.
Mr. Catino?
John Catino, 1 David Joseph Road. If I may move the question.
All those in favor of ending discussion signify by saying aye?
Aye!
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, so discussion is over, we're ready for a vote on 31D as a standalone. All those in favor of passing 31D signify by saying aye?
Aye!
All those opposed?
No!
More exercise. All those in favor, please rise. 14 on the stage. Front left, 36. Front left, 36.
Mr. Moderator, center rear, 27.
Center rear, 27.
On the right, 44.
On the right, 44.
Mr. Moderator, center front, 34.
Center front, 34.
Left rear, 36.
Left rear, 36. Okay, all those opposed, please rise, hold your cards up. Two on the stage. Front left, 11. Front left, 11.
Left rear, 31.
Left rear, 31. 231 and 11, 44 total.
Mr. Moderator, center front, 14.
Center front, 14.
Center rear, 49.
Center rear, 49.
On the right, 51.
51 on the right. The vote in favor is 191, the vote opposed is 158, and so it passes. Article 32, car wash use, sponsored by the Planning Board. Ms. Kramer?
Good evening. Is this on? Oh, I'll just have to get closer. Yes. We move the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the town of Hawkinson as set forth in Article 32 of the annual town meeting warrant. So the Planning Board held a public hearing on the proposal on February 25th, March 25th, and April 8th of 2019, and the board voted on April 8th to recommend to the town meeting that we adopt the change. It should be noted, too, that the zoning advisory committee saw this and did put it forward to the Planning Board as well. I have a presentation. So essentially, it changes the zoning districts where car washes can, are allowed. They are currently allowed in the downtown business district and the business district, so they would now be allowed in the industrial A and business. So by adding it to industrial A, and it removes it from downtown business. It will be a use by special permit, which requires a public hearing with notice to the abutters, and it also adds a reference to the necessary use of technologies that are the most current for conservation of water and electricity.
Are there questions?
Ted Barkerhook, 75 Grove Street. I'm a member of the zoning advisory committee, but I'm speaking as a citizen. I rise to speak against this amendment, and I said so in zoning advisory meetings. I'd like to give a little history and a little background. Four years ago, in the zoning advisory commission, committee, we had an informal discussion about expanding car washes, and it didn't go anywhere. We all pretty much agreed, no, this is not something we want in town. Mr. Mastriani brought it to the zoning advisory committee, and we discussed it. The vote for it happened to be on a day where several members of the committee were not there. I was one of them, so I was not able to, my fault, register my vote. But it surprised me how quickly it moved through, given the history, and frankly, it surprised Mr. Mastriani as well. He said so at a Planning Board meeting in April, that he was surprised how this got along. More history, the industrial A district was created with the express intent to bring high-paying, high-skilled, high-revenue business, jobs from high-revenue businesses. This article and car washes fail on all of those counts. I toured different car washes in the area. There are plenty of car washes in the area. I couldn't find any place that hired more than five people. I found two car washes where I couldn't find any employees at all. The car washes that pay is all wage pay, and, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. It does not create, also, the car washes told me is their tax levy is low because the taxes are based on the assessed value of the property. Compared to, say, businesses and office buildings, research facilities where we have equipment that all gets taxed, the only thing that gets taxed in a car wash is the car wash equipment and the cement blocks that hold it up. The zoning advisory committee, after voting on this, also had a discussion where we looked at about 50 different types of businesses that could come to the town. They ranged from traditional office buildings to research centers, hospitals, all the way down to asphalt plants and hazardous waste processing. We took in everything we could think of. Car washes finished near the bottom in job creation, high-skilled jobs, tax revenue, and bringing other business, or driving business to other in-town businesses. It was near the bottom of all 50. I find this to be a short-sighted solution to our question of commercial revenue. Yes, it will bring in some commercial tax dollars. I agree. Compared to what could be on that land, it's a pittance. If a car wash comes to town, as the one in Milford has been for 60 years, it will not leave. Car washes are inexpensive to run and highly profitable and good for the businesses that make their money. But it means that land is gone virtually forever for a more high-tax-revenue business. I urge you to please think long-term, learn from history of short-sighted decisions, and please consider whether this is in the best long-term interest of our town. I agree a car wash nearby would be convenient. I am not voting on what is convenient for me. Thank you.
Go ahead.
William Simpson, 5 Constitution. If you enjoy water, air, water, and noise pollution, and if you really like the refreshing sound of an airport nearby, please do vote for this contraption.
On my right?
Bob Levinson, 13 Smith Road. Clarification, are we voting on whether to allow a car wash or to change the location? Because if I understand this, if this gets voted down, someone could put a car wash downtown. So what are we voting on here?
So it is true that car washes are currently allowed in the downtown business and business districts, and the Planning Board did consider that that would be sort of the least attractive place for a car wash to be. Currently, the zoning does not require any business to use the most energy and water-safe methodologies, although I think that that would be part of the discussion if anybody came forward, but this would make it explicit in the zoning bylaws.
That, so we're not voting on the virtues of a car wash, we're voting on location, essentially?
So we are voting on location. I do think that, I do think that Mr. Barkerhook, you know, makes an excellent point, that it's not necessarily the highest, best use of the property in the industrial zones, and we would like to have other uses. I think the Planning Board considered that, you know, it is better than an empty, empty location. We certainly considered that we really didn't want it in the downtown business district. And I do think that it's self-limiting in that we won't have many car washes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it was very well done. I just wanted to clarify that what we were voting on. Thank you.
On my left?
Francis DeYoung, 3 Doyle Lane, speaking as a citizen, not as a member of the Planning Board. I am in favor of this. I do look at it as a, kind of a proactive way to manage if there's going to be a car wash. It does have, it is by special permit. It is, and now ideally, if this is passed and is zone, that's off the beaten track and not necessarily downtown. And, you know, Mr. Barker, Mr. Barkerhook does bring up some valid points, but I think it'll be up to the landowner to determine what's the best use of this property in that industrial A. Thank you.
On my right?
Pat Secor, 21 Valentine Road. Just one clarification, please. By voting yes on this, are we taking away the possibility that a car wash would be built downtown?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Marlane Troops, 31 Walcott Street. What about conserving water? I mean, already there's an issue that we have signs up saying watering, don't water, watch when you're watering your lawn, or don't water your lawn. We're buying water from ashland, I understand, sometime if we're still doing that? Is this a prudent use of? sometime, if we're still doing that. Is this a prudent use of water?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Moderator. That did come up, and smarter people than I made the point that in areas of this country where water is even more extremely conserved, that car washes are in fact preferable to having people wash their cars at their home, because they are intentionally conservative of water resources. So, and that language is inserted into this, into this zoning article.
Thank you.
Dave Paul, South Meadowland Drive, member of the Planning Board. I just want to add a little clarity, because it sounds like some people are concerned that we would still be allowing car washes in the business district, downtown business. The point here is by special permit, and if people aren't aware of how the Planning Board works, if it's by use, we basically have to almost approve what is in front of us. When they come with a special permit, we get to ask a lot more questions, and if there's reasons that we don't want it in, like abutting neighbors and so forth, that we can turn that down. So I just want to make sure that people aren't voting for this just to prevent a car wash in downtown.
B. McMellon, eight Lakeshore Drive. I'm always concerned about water. That has been my main, one of my main arguments, living on the lake, which the industrial, some of the water feeds down into the lake. I see so many people enjoying the lake and the quality. What happens if supposed this car wash breaks down or takes a leak? There goes our precious water and the lake. Thank you.
I'd like to comment a couple of things. When I wash a car, I use about two or two-and-a-half gallons of wash water to wash the car, and that much again to rinse it off. A total of five gallons if I wash a car, which happens no more than once, twice a year. I would like to know how to vote to not have any car wash anywhere, or if there's going to be one, how about putting it in the middle of the dump?
I see we're ready for a vote. All those in favor of Article thirty-two, car wash use, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
All right, we need a standing vote. All those in favor, please rise and hold your cards up.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
Center front, twenty-five.
Center front, twenty-five.
Left front, thirty-seven.
Left rear, forty-one.
On the right, fifty-four.
Mr. Moderator, center rear, fifty-nine.
Center rear, fifty-nine. Three on the stage.
Front left, seven.
Mr. Moderator, center front, twenty-two.
Center rear, nineteen.
Left rear, twenty-five.
On the right, forty-one.
In favor, two twenty-six. Opposed, one seventeen. That is not a two-thirds majority, and so the article fails. Article thirty-three.
Article thirty-three, indoor recreation uses. The motion, we move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the town of Hopkinton as set forth in Article thirty-three of the annual town meeting warrant. The Planning Board held a public hearing on the proposal on February twenty-fifth, March twenty-fifth, and April eighth. The board voted on April eighth, two thousand and nineteen, to recommend to the town meeting that, to adopt the change. So this article adds indoor recreation as a use by special permit in the industrial A district, which is South Street. The process requires a public hearing with notice to the abutters. Today, indoor rec is only allowed in the industrial B district, which is also by special permit. The purpose is to increase the possibility that an indoor recreation use could locate here. The use was defined and added to the bylaw in two thousand and fifteen because of the growing popularity of some of these activities and the desire to have more indoor recreation in Hopkinton. The proposed change is intended to increase that likelihood.
Are there any questions? Okay, seeing none, we're ready for a vote. All those in favor of indoor recreation uses under Article thirty-three, signify by saying... Mr. Harrow.
Ed Harrow, it's Spring Lane. Isn't there a physical exercise place on South Street? The name of which escapes me.
CrossFit.
Ms. Kramer.
I'm sure that there is, or there was.
There is?
There is.
There is?
Yeah.
So, how did they get there?
Oh.
Thank you.
I believe, I believe that's an enforcement question.
Yes.
For the building inspector.
If it's not a...
If it's not a permitted use, it should not have been allowed, and it's something for the building enforcement officer to address.
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna phone a friend, Mr. Moderator.
No, we don't need a lifeline.
So...
We need a vote. We need a vote. All those in favor of Article thirty-three signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it's unanimous, and so voted. Thank you. Article thirty-four, self-storage facilities. Mr. Mastriani.
Paul Mastriani, nine South Bond Road. We move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the town of Hopkinton as set forth in Article thirty-four of the annual town meeting warrant. At this time, I have Kathy Sherry that's going to come up and give a great, great presentation.
Before the presentation, does the Planning Board have... Oh, is there a, is there a second to the motion? No, we don't need a second.
No, it's a citizen's...
We do need a second. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, it's been seconded. Is there a recommendation from Planning Board?
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, the zoning advisory committee did hear this proposal first and did not recommend it forward to the Planning Board. We did review Mr. Mastriani's citizen's petition, and we did ultimately vote not to support this.
And to the presentation now.
Thank you. We did want to provide a brief overview...
And I think you need to be into the microphone.
Is it not?
You need to get closer to the mic.
Is that better? Is that better? So Kathy Sherry for Paul Mastriani. We did want to provide a brief overview on the citizen's petition. Basically, we are requesting to amend the zoning bylaws, again, for the industrial A district only, to allow self-storage facilities as permitted by right. We also would like to add to the supplementary regulations to define the parking requirements associated with this new use. We did bring this request to the zoning advisory committee, and as you just heard, the Planning Board, they voted not to support this, support this amendment. We felt it was for reasons that weren't in line with the current and permitted uses within the industrial A district, and that's what we'll address some of tonight. If we could go to the next slide. So self-storage is not currently allowed anywhere in Hopkinton. This would only add it to the industrial A district. When you look at the industrial A district, and as we've talked about tonight, it is really all the South Street area. And if you look at the South Street area, it really is a commercial hub of Hopkinton. If you drive along South Street, you have a wide mix of office, R&amp;D, warehouse, of retail, of restaurants. It's big businesses like Dell alongside small businesses. It's not so much what you might term industrial as commercial. So because of the location of this district, it's not downtown, it's not on the main roads through town, residential development is not allowed here, and because of the wide variety of what's already permitted in this district, self-storage makes sense in this area. If we look at the uses in the district, if we could go to the next slide, self-storage is actually well-aligned with the current businesses in this district, as well as what's permitted, as stated in the bylaws, within the district. The primary reason, as you heard earlier, that the Planning Board, as well as the zoning advisory committee, did not vote to support this, was because the area was zoned and intended to bring in a high number of jobs, high-salary jobs, high-skilled jobs. And the intention, and the feeling was that self-storage, which is true, does not bring in a high number of jobs, and that it was more of a lower-paying wage job. We counter that many of the permitted uses by right, as stated in the bylaws, really don't meet that same requirement. They don't provide high number of jobs, not, don't, they're not high-salary jobs. We've listed a few of them here, and if you look at them, landscaping businesses, restaurants, retail stores, truck rental and repair, recycling centers. We just approved, you just approved indoor recreation facilities. If you look at that model and you compare it, self-storage is not that far off. If we look at the need and the business case for self-storage, it's not available at all in town. It is offered in surrounding towns. When we, when we actually started to think about developing a self-storage facility, we questioned, is there a need and who's the customer? So we knew that there was a need just from what we're asked for by our current tenants. Mr. Mastriani owns seventy-seven West Main Street and one Lumber Street. Our tenants are constantly asking us, is there storage area available? And when we looked into the business model further, it's actually business customers can make up to forty percent of your tenant mix. Everybody thinks of it maybe just as residential, but there's a big business need for that as well. It's less expensive to rent a storage unit than to rent a bigger space or an additional office. If you work from home or you own a small business, you need extra space for inventory, equipment. It's a lot cheaper than renting commercial space. On the residential side, if you could go to the next slide, with the downsizing that's going on and the trend toward apartment living, there's a heavy need, obviously, to have, to have these units available for temporary and longer-term storage. So residents, business owners in town are taking their business to Milford, to Westboro, to Ashland. We want to be able to actually meet their needs right here in Hopkinton. There were a few comments that we received regarding the safety of self-storage facilities and do they attract crime. The simple answer is no. Self-storage facilities and the design are meant to protect the property with extensive security measures, and then there's also facilities management, takes measures to keep that illegal activity off the property. So just to summarize, we're here tonight because we feel self-stor, self-storage is a service both businesses and residences, residence needs. It's a use that's well-aligned with the mix and variety and types of businesses in the industrial A district, and this business fits better in this location in town than anywhere else. And we just want to point out also, there is a significant amount of vacant space up on South Street. And not knowing what might happen with Dell long-term, that could put even more of that same type of space available up on South Street. So from a development standpoint, why do we want to add more of the same? Adding more is not a prudent development decision. It's our, there's already that space already unrented on South Street. Self-storage will bring in tax revenue without burdening the town's infrastructure. Very minimal water sewer requirements, certainly doesn't impact traffic, certainly doesn't impact schools.
Mr. Moderator, point of order?
Yes.
There is a limit to how long a petitioner can present for. I believe we're over that time limit.
I'm done, that's fine.
Okay, you're right. We'll go to questions. On my left.
Ted Barker Hook, seventy-five Grove Street, member of ZAC, speaking as a citizen. I'm not going to repeat everything I said about car washes, although all of it still applies. I would like to correct some errors in the presentation that we just heard, or straighten out some misleading statements. Three of the uses in industrial A that they listed are allowed by special permit. They are asking for warehouses by right. That's an entirely different ball of wax. I'd also like to say, we do have self-storage in town. I go to it regularly as a member of the Hopkinton Little League Board. It's seven-hundred-and-fifty feet away, right over there, across the street. We've been using it in Little League for years. There is plenty of self-storage around. As I made my rounds to the car washes, I also stopped at self-storage facilities.
[laughter]
All of them, every... All of them, every single one that I visited has space. Every single one. And most have signs that say "First Month Free", which means they're desperate for customers. One of the places I went said they hired zero employees. They just moved around managers from other facilities that they had. Finally, I'd like to ask, what does it do to the neighborhood on South Street? Because there are residents that live right off South Street. And I'd like to know if you, sitting there, would like to say to a friend, a relative, someone, maybe to buy your house, "Sure, take a left at the self-storage facility, and then you'll be in my neighborhood." Thank you.
On my right.
Dave Paul, 7th Meadowland Drive, member of the planning board, speaking as a private citizen. I don't know if you guys realize this, but for the past 50 years, I've only been on the planning board for three years. For the past 50 years, there's been many of my predecessors that have done an excellent job of zoning in this town. It's one of the best-zoned towns around. We are where we are. We have the best schools. We have really high-priced homes. We have everything here. And one of the reasons that we do that is because we get to pick and choose what we want in this town. To me, in my personal opinion, self-storage and car washes do not belong in Hopkinton. It doesn't fit our character. We have very big towns close to us, Framingham, Milford, Westboro, where we can go for those kind of facilities. Thank you.
On my left.
Tricia Seamus, 36 Lake Shore Drive. So Ted began to make my point before I came up here, that I live on Lake Shore Drive, right on the lake. And it is really disheartening to me to hear how South Street has become sort of a throwaway area in town. And listening tonight, I know we're gonna end up with a big apex facility like on Route 20 in Marlborough, and next will be big self-storage facilities. I work on South Street as well. So I live in the neighborhood, and I work in the neighborhood. And I work at a small business that hires engineers at very high wages. There are a lot of businesses that are growing on South Street that are not types of car washes and self-storage. There's a lot of innovation going on there. There's a lot of companies that are hiring at high wages. And I just think that if it's not allowed anywhere else in town, you shouldn't just decide it belongs on South Street. Thank you.
On my right.
Mr. Moderator, Brian Herr Elizabeth wrote, "What would be the setback for a facility like this if it were sited on South Street?"
Is that a question for the planning board?
It's a question.
Shall it remain in the cloud?
I'd like it to come down to earth and get an answer, please. What's the setback gonna be? Is this gonna be right on top of South Street, or is this gonna be set back 100 feet into the woods?
So based on the current bylaw, the minimum setback would be 60 feet from the property line of butting the street. So 60 feet. That's what the bylaw states.
A follow-on, if I could, please? Would it be appropriate to have a special setback for this type of facility on South Street? Or would that mess up other setbacks along the way?
If it was added as a by right, then I'm assuming that all of the setbacks would apply to all of the uses, so...
Mr. Moderator, if I could, please? So yes, I understand, but could we set it back further?
Yes.
Thank you. On my left.
Risk of sounding like a parrot. I would be opposed to this, again, as a landhog that's gonna be there for 60 to 100 years or more, paying very little taxes and generating very little job value, and not being the most scenic thing, anyway. I would rather the land, if it has to be used industrially, for research and so forth. We can leave the self-storage, the car washes, and the hot tub plants to Framingham. Thanks.
On my right.
Rafan Nasrul Slakman, but speaking as an individual, Winchester Street. I just wanted to say, generally speaking, I would think that anything by right is something that we should... We would want to be taking a look at it. I would say that, nothing against self-storage facilities, but I think we would want it be done through special permit, not by right. Thank you.
On my left.
Francis DeYoung, 3 Doyle Lane. I will speak to the fact that, yes, across the street, there is a facility. It is sold out. Right, there is a need in town to have this facility. And if I'm a resident, and I have to rent a truck and drive to Southboro or Northboro, it's additional costs that I have to incur. Every time I wanna go out there and get something from there and bring it in. You know, having it in industrial aid is no different than one of the warehouses out there. Right, but it allows us here in town the ability, as both residents and maybe a small business owner, to have a facility that I can kind of easily get to, grab whatever I need, and then kind of take it out. So I am in favor of this.
On my right.
Mr. Moderator, Jerry Tuit, 4 Price Street. I believe I rise to a point of fact. We just heard someone say that we could apply a different setback to a car wash. Unless it's written in to our bylaws, we could not do that. I believe that was an erroneous fact.
Yes.
Secondly, we've heard from the zoning advisory committee. I would like to hear from the planning board why they recommended not approving this. Why they didn't approve it. Could someone from the planning board, Mr. Moderator, tell us why they recommended this approval?
Ms. Kramer?
Yeah, I, through you, Mr. Moderator. Essentially, it was a split vote, but essentially, we recognized that this is certainly, for all the reasons that have been discussed, not the highest and best use of that property, that we hope will be utilized differently, and have hoped that for a long time, honestly. But we also understood that a self-storage facility zone would not necessarily self-limit. And certainly, we don't have any aspirations for there to be multiple self-storage units. And allowing it in the district allows it in the district for anybody, and it could conceivably be, you know, a huge business that doesn't necessarily return to the town.
On my left.
Bob McGuire, 4 Huckleberry Road. I'm standing in favor of this article. The, this needs to be viewed as an amenity to the people in town, as well as the businesses. Yes, it won't generate a lot of taxes, but it's an amenity that is needed. We have three large buildings on South Street that are vacant. One's 80,000 square feet, one's about 64, and one's another 152,000. So there's a lot of vacant space on the street that still could be filled up. And this is an opportunity for those folks that do have small businesses or have a need in their house for self-storage. So it needs to be, in my view, looked at as an amenity. Thank you.
On my right.
Dave Paul, speaking as a member of the planning board. Because I just wanted to clarify the previous gentleman's question there. Elaine, correct me if I'm wrong, but with the setback being 60 feet, you can move it back as far as you want. The setback is a minimum setback, so what it does is prevent it from being 30 feet, 20 feet, 10 feet away to protect.
On my left.
Mark Iman, 12 Hidden Brick. Mr. Moderator, would it be within the bounds of this article to amend the section from 21034, uses permitted by right, to 21035, uses permitted by special permit?
I believe it would.
Then I'd like to propose that amendment.
Is there a second? Is there, okay, so is there discussion on the motion? The motion essentially would change the tenor of this article from a use by right to a use by special permit. Is there discussion on that motion?
Leslie Ficari, 57 Greenwood Road. This is to the planning board. Could you just clarify for us, through the moderator, what special right particularly means? And then, do you have the ability to deny this?
Ms. Kramer?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So special, a use by right means that any property owner can develop their property in that zone in a way that is allowed as a use by right. So the planning board or the zoning board of appeals would have no role in limiting or addressing that use. I believe that probably the question is best posed to the board of appeals because it's a use. But the special permit, use by special permit does allow the town to appropriately make greater restrictions, notify, you know, the butters are notified. There's a process in place. The butters are notified. The appropriate board hears, and takes testimony, considers, and decides, and yes, can approve or disapprove of a special permit application.
One clarification to make on this. 210-35, special permit is something which is determined by the zoning board of appeals.
Mr. Moderator, I noticed there are two sections in 35. There's A and B. A is board of appeals. B is planning board. Currently, the only thing in B for planning board is marijuana dispensaries, which we don't allow. I would propose to put it in 35A for the board of appeals.
So you're clarifying that your original motion was to change this language to 210-35 per N.A.?
Yes.
It's okay. On my right.
Dave Paul, member of the planning board. I stand against this amendment because, being on the planning board, I always take into consideration what's best for the town. So if we leave it as it is, whether you approve it or disapprove it, it tells me whether you want this type of use in town or not. If you change it to by special permit, now that's a gray area. I don't know if the town would prefer it or not. So it's really, as Muriel pointed out, it's up to the planning board to decide. So just wanted to point that out.
On my right.
Joey Gazange, Elizabeth Road. A question regarding the notice to butters. How broad is that notice? And who has the ability, at the planning board meeting, to voice their opinion? I'm just wondering if this type of amendment will have the effect that is presumably what's desired by the town.
Mr. Moderator, if I can reply, through you. First, just to clarify, this is, this would be going to the zoning board of appeals, not the planning board. And then, secondly, I defer to town staff as to the range of the notice that's given. It is a certain distance from the property line, and I don't recall exactly. But any member of the public can speak at the meeting. And any 300 feet, I'm told, is the distance. So any property located within 300 feet will be noticed.
Other discussion on the amendment.
Carol Dever, 47 Chamberlain Street. I just wanted to make the point that if it does become by special permit... Special permit does not mean that just because people think it's a stinky idea, we're just gonna say no. There has to be a reason. Special permit just allows the boards to put on criteria and listen to the butters and public input so that we can address particular concerns with the use, not just so that we can sit around and say, "Okay, maybe you guys wanted that, but we really don't want to do that, so we're just gonna say no." We can't, as a board, just say no. It's just to give you more oversight into how the site is set up and what uses are allowed and what restrictions are put on it. So I just wanted to make that clarification. Thank you.
On my left. Anything further?
Not on the amendment.
Okay. So there is a motion to amend, and the amendment would change the permitting to be permitting under 210-35A, which is a special permit, and that would be decided by the zoning board of appeals. Does everyone understand what you're voting on? Okay. And so this is a simple majority to see if the meeting wants to accept the amendment. All those in favor of the motion to amend signify by saying aye.
Aye!
Any opposed?
No!
I can see we're gonna be here tomorrow night. All those in favor of the motion to amend, please rise and hold your card. Nine on the stage.
Mr. Moderator, front left is 20.
Front left, 20.
Left rear, 22.
Left rear, 22.
Center rear, 40.
Center rear, 40.
On the right, 28.
28 on the right.
Center front, 26.
Center front, 26. Okay, all those opposed, please rise and hold your cards up. Three on the stage.
Front left, 27.
Front left, 27.
Mr. Moderator, center, 23.
Center 23, is that front or rear?
Front.
Front.
Left rear, 43.
Left rear, 43.
Center rear, 40.
Center rear, 40.
On the right, 54.
54 on the right. 145 in favor, 190 opposed. The amendment does not carry. So we're back to the main motion. Is there further discussion on the main motion?
No.
This meeting is getting cranky. All right. All those in favor of Article 34 as written signify by saying aye.
Aye!
All those opposed?
No!
That is clearly not a 2/3s majority in favor, and so the motion pass, fails. Article 35.
Associated Retail to Manufacturing. In the motion, we move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the town of Hopkinton as set forth in Article 35 of the annual town meeting warrant. The planning board held a public hearing on the proposal on February 25th, March 25th, April 8th. The board voted on April 8th to recommend to the town meeting to adopt the change. So Article 35 would allow a small, no larger than 5,000 square feet... So Article thirty-five would allow a small, no larger than five thousand square feet, not necessarily co-located with the manufacturing company, but a small retail space within the district to allow the manufacturing companies in the industrial A and industrial B districts to locally sell items that they manufacture. A special permit from the ZBA would be required for the use. The process requires a public hearing and notice to the butters and there is no change in the bylaws to what products can be manufactured in the district.
Are there any questions? Seeing that there are none, all those in favor of Article thirty-five as written indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Unfortunately, we need to stand for that. Sorry, it's a requirement.
No, it's not. No. No, we don't.
This is a requirement of the Attorney General. It's not some whimsical requirement of the town moderator. So those in favor, please stand.
Mr. Moderator, center front, forty-two.
Center front, forty-two. Front left, forty-five. Eighty-one on the right.
Center rear, eighty.
Center rear, eighty.
Left back, fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight. Okay, all those opposed, please rise.
On the right, three.
On the right, three.
Front left, three.
Front left, three.
Center rear, one.
Center rear, one.
Left back, one.
Left back, one. We need about a hundred and fifty to make this fail. Is there any in the center front? Three hundred and five in favor, eight opposed. That's more than two-thirds. Yeah, I'm positive. Article thirty-six.
If I could first make sure I ask my friends in I T. to put up the slides as appropriate to the articles, that would be ever so helpful.
Can I interrupt for one minute? Mr. Moderator, can I ask you a point of order question, please?
What is your point of order?
In thirty-four, it was a two-thirds majority, but you took a voice vote, which was, you know, close enough. And then in thirty-five, which again required a two-thirds majority, you had to have a standing count.
Thirty-four was unanimous.
Pardon?
Thirty-four was unanimous and therefore doesn't require a count.
It was not.
Thirty, thirty-four failed. It clearly failed.
But why did we have, you said it was legally required for thirty-five, but not legally required for thirty-four? I'm a little confused.
Only, only the, the articles that pass go to the Attorney General. I mean, we, we can, we can count until the cows come home and we'll be here on Friday night. Where it's, where it's not required by the Attorney General and it's more than clear that it, it fails, there's no need to count. Ms. Kramer?
Article thirty-six, the Osmood residence age restricted housing. We move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the town of Hopkinton as set forth in Article thirty-six of the annual town meeting warrant. The Planning Board held a public hearing on the proposal on February twenty-fifth, March twenty-fifth, April eighth, and the board met again May second and took the vote to recommend a town meeting that we adopted the change. So with your permission, Mr. Moderator, we will outline the problem that the two articles, Article thirty-six and thirty-seven are intended to address. And then just to be clear that we vote on each article separately, so each article is a standalone article. So the zoning bylaw for the age restricted units at Legacy Farm require that, it's a hundred and eighty age restricted units. The zoning bylaw and in fact, the permit that has been issued require ten percent of those hundred and eighty age restricted units to be affordable. And by age restricted, in this case, we mean over fifty-five. The zoning bylaw also states that no children under the age of eighteen can live in the age restricted development. In order for the affordable units to count towards the state's ten percent goal, they need to be approved by the state and be deed restricted by the state-approved deed writer. Important to note that the state will not approve affordable housing units in developments that prohibit children. The state will approve affordable housing units that require one resident to be fifty-five or over. So simply put, we're in a position where the developer cannot comply with the bylaw. Article thirty-six offers a solution that doesn't increase the number of housing units in town. Article thirty-seven offers a solution that could result in the developer making a payment in lieu of providing affordable housing units or, within the development or providing units elsewhere in town or a combination of the two. Both options could result in additional children in the school system. Historically, there are not likely to be many children in the over fifty-five development if Sanctuary Lane is indicative of what we might expect. And the developer has built, just to be clear, the developer has built the age restriction for no children into his master deed documents and marketing materials and the developer is opposed to removing the age restriction and by that I mean to preclude children, anybody under age eighteen, but will do so if Article thirty-six passes. So speaking, oh, could, could we advance the slides? I guess I have to keep looking. Go back. Go back to thirty-six, please. Okay. Article thirty-six addresses the age restriction issue. The age restriction issue that we're speaking of is prohibiting children. It still will be an over fifty-five development. It removes the prohibition on children under eighteen in the age restricted development. It includes the over fifty-five restriction that the state will accept. One resident must be fifty-five or over. The affordable units would then be provided within the development and it will require eighteen of the hundred and eighty units already permitted. There would be no change in the number of dwelling units. Development would likely proceed as already permitted. And just as an additional note, the host community agreement for the Osmood, for the Legacy Farms development requires that if there are more than three Hopkinton students in the development, a payment of nine thousand dollars per student for the fourth student and up must be made to the town. It is not a one-time payment, but continues over time.
Go ahead.
Are we ready for this? Jen Devlin, Sixth Ray Street. I am a member of the school committee, but I guess I'm speaking as sort of a, a well-informed citizen about what's happening in the schools, although you all are now that too after last night. I appreciate that the developer is in a little bit of a situation and is not able to meet the zoning bylaws and the state requirements. But I just want to remind everybody that if we approve this, last night, we still have the potential for a hundred and thirty-two students to join the schools. If we approve this, that's whatever that math is, two hundred and twelve students to join the schools just from this, that's assuming one child per, per dwelling. Am I doing the math right if we approve this?
I wasn't doing math.
I mean, the math, maybe not, but the, yeah, but the, but the implication, I guess, is that, that accurate?
Well, Muriel, you can comment on this as well, but do, do you have any statistics that indicate how many over fifty-five households have children under the age of eighteen?
So we do have that and I don't know if I have it in the packet.
Well, I'll be in that stack, I'm just saying.
So, so through you, Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
We don't have a lot of historical data in, in town, but Sanctuary Lane has a very, has had in its history, a very small number of children. There is, there is data available and I apologize that I don't have that. I think that it is important to remember here that, I want to, I, I kind of got stuck on your first point, so I, I sort of checked out on the math piece, but.
The math is irrelevant.
I want to make sure that town meeting voters understand that it's not the developer that is in this pickle alone. We're in it together. So we have zoned and permitted a development that actually can't go forward as it's zoned and permitted. So it's incumbent upon us as town meeting voters to find a solution. So the Planning Board did vote and it, we, we wrangled over this, I will say, but we did vote in a majority to support Article thirty-six. And largely, it's because we prized the component of affordable housing and it feels intentional that it was there. And we also believe that the payment mitigate, the payment because of the host community agreement, if there are school children in that overlay and that development, this, the town and the school department does get a mitigating cost, mitigating payment.
Which would, just point of clarification, just go into the stabilization fund that we established last night.
That's correct.
Okay. And can I just ask one follow-up? In terms of a solution, if we don't approve children in the over fifty-five housing in this particular development, one of the things you mentioned was we could build eighteen homes elsewhere that would be affordable housing that allowed children? Is that correct?
So through you, Mr. Moderator, I, I introduce both Article thirty-six and thirty-seven so that voters would be aware that there are two alternatives. You are correct. And we can also vote for both. We can vote in the affirmative for both and maintain the greatest amount of flexibility so they do not negate each other. So there is, this approach maintains that there are a hundred and eighty units as permitted, as zoned and permitted, and ten percent of them would be affordable. It would necessarily allow children to be able to live there. The next alternative would be to make, keep the, the restriction on children and, and force the affordable units to be built elsewhere or a payment to the town in lieu of taxes. There is, again, math involved then because eighteen of those units up there would go away, which would mean we would get seventeen units somewhere else or a payment that, that would, a payment in lieu of taxes to our affordable housing task force. So there are two approaches.
Okay. On my right?
Clay Wright, twenty-eight Hayden Row Street. I am less concerned about the small number of students that might come out of an over fifty-five than I am about falling behind our affordable housing count. We fortunately, right now, have met our ten percent and are therefore protected from a comprehensive permit forty-B, but we can't squander that. And we could very easily fall below that, or fall above that and get a large, large forty-B housing complex such as the Hopkinton News, for example. I am not in favor of the payout idea because I'm also speaking as a long-term former member of the Planning Board for about fifteen years and in the time, since the time we had our inclusionary zoning bylaw, which required ten, you know, one affordable for every ten, it is way too easy for the developers to just dump the money, pay the money, pay the money, pay the money. I've seen very, very little in the way of actual affordable housing being built. They would much rather just pay it upfront. And the amount of payment is for an affordable unit, but the Affordable Housing Task Force can't go out and buy a unit at market rate at that, at that level. One of the things with the Osmood was we got an agreement that in this massive development, it would not put us behind in our affordable housing count and it's going to be all too easy to just dump the money in. I, I'm sorry for the developer that feels that the rules have changed. It's not that we reneged on our promise, it's that the rules of the state have changed. And I know there will be no difficulty whatsoever in selling those units. The units up there are selling like hotcakes. I think we have to do what is right and in the best interest and to protect our town from the detrimental effects of falling below and getting open again to a forty-B housing complex. So I would support the over fifty-five, but I do not support the payout option in this particular development.
Thank you. On my left?
Nancy Richards Kavanaugh, twenty-five Priscilla Road. I am a member of the school committee, but I am speaking as a private citizen. I have a question on the host community, excuse me, agreement. You had said, and I know this is a slightly different provision, it sounds like, but the host community agreement that we talked about last night specifically, and I know this also will go into the stabilization fund, but that had to do with the overall numbers, is one-time payments. And I just want to clarify, did I hear you say that, that in the, this particular part of the development, it would be recurring payments of nine thousand dollars?
That is what I said, but I'm happy to ask the attorney to make sure I'm correct.
Would that be every year if they have more than three students, they'd be paying nine thousand dollars per student? That's, I'm just questioning because it's very different from the other parts of the host community agreement.
Sadly, the host community agreement is very long, so it's going to take me a moment.
I, I have a second point. I have a second point I want to...
Go ahead and talk about your second point, and I will find the answer.
So I am concerned about the age restriction change, just because I happen to live in a home with one parent who's fifty-five, and I have three children.
Me too.
I have three children in the public schools, one of whom is still in elementary school. And I am concerned that the overall Legacy Farms development brought in many more kids than we believed we would have years ago when we approved it. I am afraid that this could have a similar effect. That's all.
On my right?
If I could make, I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator, if I could make a clarifying point, too. I just want to make sure that folks understand that these units are also deed restricted to be two bedrooms, if it matters to you to think about that.
Russell Shade, Seventh Summer Street. Am I correct in thinking that this is going to remove the prohibition on all a hundred and eighty units, but only eighteen are going to be used as affordable housing?
That's correct.
Is it possible to amend this to only remove the restriction on those eighteen units?
So through you, Mr. Moderator, the state will not approve it that way. The development in its entirety needs to not prohibit children in order to have it count.
Thanks.
On my left?
Jesse Manning, fifty-nine West Elm Street. I have a question about multi-generational, multi-generational homes. We keep speaking about parents who are over fifty-five, but if a grandparent or multiple grandparents are living with the family, would that count as a resident for that particular housing unit? And then would the, you know, the parents of them, the child be able to attend Hopkinton?
So I think that as long as the individual, whether they're the grandparent or the parent, is an owner or in there, that counts. But I'm also happy to get clarification if I'm wrong.
Okay. Attorney Mieres.
Okay. I found the provision. There are three different provisions that call for payments to the town in the event that certain numerical thresholds are exceeded. The one that specifically pertains to the senior housing says that for each student in the school population who comes from one of those senior housing units, if they're, the first three are free, after that, it's nine thousand dollars per pupil per year.
And just a question, how much does it cost per student to attend Hopkinton schools?
I think the average that we saw was in the neighborhood of fifteen thousand dollars. However, you should understand that taxes are also being paid in addition to the special payments. So the nine thousand is not the entire reflection of the amount of revenue that the town is receiving. On my right?
Claire Bet, ninety-two Clinton Street. I am a realtor here in town, and I've sold many over fifty-five homes. And they are mainly for people who are downsizing, so who have come from a really nice house and want fewer bedrooms, but they want other rooms. So it may only have two bedrooms, but it's got a den and an office and a loft and a finished basement. And my experience has been that if you remove the limitation for children, they will absolutely become multi-generational homes. So you will be getting children in the school systems, because it will be grandparents, parents, and children. And there may be just two bedrooms, but there are lots of other rooms that can be bedrooms.
Through the moderator, these are specifically deed restricted to be only two bedrooms so that it is intended that none of the other rooms can be converted to bedrooms.
And who is the enforcement officer? On my left?
Amy Ritter Bush, fifty-four Grove Street. It's been stated that they're restricted to be two-bedroom units, but could you state the square footage of the units, or average square footage?
Go ahead.
I believe it's eighteen hundred square feet. And then I also wanted to ask about the nine thousand dollar payment per student. I'm concerned that wouldn't that also be considered discriminatory and that the state might not allow that in an affordable housing development?
Mr. Attorney Mieres.
Absolutely, that's our problem. The, these units will not, with the deed restriction that is already in place, that we required as part of our special permit that we issued, and is also required under our zoning bylaw, has resulted in a situation where those units will not be accepted and added to our subsidized housing inventory. So they don't count towards our ten percent, and that is the problem.
So if we remove the restriction, then we don't get the nine thousand per student?
You still get the nine thousand. You still get the nine thousand, but we don't have to submit all of that material to the state for approval.
Okay. I'm still a little confused, but...
So just to be clear, I understood, Mr. Mieres, that the state will not be, it will not be problematic that we have the host community agreement with the fee. That will not be considered by the state as problematic. We will, that will be no problem if we remove the age restriction under eighteen and we require the payment after the fourth child, if there are four or more, the state will pass muster on that.
Yes, that is correct.
On my right?
Nancy Stevens, an eighteen Hayden Row. Is it the developer that would be paying the cost for the kids? Is that what you're saying? Or the homeowners?
Through the moderator, it is the developer who will be paying the fee.
Until such time...
I'm sorry.
Until such time, the developer ultimately will probably transfer that duty to the homeowners' association.
Is there any way, can I have another question, please? I was wondering if there's a way that that cost could simply be owned by the homeowner that chooses to be in an over fifty-five community and have a child live there? And the cost...
That's outside of the scope of this discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
On my left?
Gary Trendle, thirty-one Chamberlain Street, member of the planning board, but speaking as a private citizen. I've also wrestled with this a lot. I think at the end of the day, we know that good affordable housing is when it's mixed in and it's not just set aside someplace else. But I want to make two points. The first is that this hundred and eighty-unit development was approved at a town meeting in two thousand and fifteen, and it passed, I think, by one vote. And if I recall, I think for a lot of people, one of the reasons they were willing to allow this, at least for myself, and I'll just speak for myself, not for everyone else, was because of this age restriction. So on the other side, we have this affordable housing situation, and I think that many of us would like to avoid an unfriendly forty-B. But if we look at the analysis that our town planner did, currently, as of April of this year, we have seven hundred and twenty-eight affordable units in Hopkinton. Our total inventory is six thousand five hundred and thirty-four. So what that means is that if we were to drop below that ten percent threshold, we would need to build over seven hundred additional units before we even would be, would drop below that threshold. And so my argument is that if there was someplace where we were going to build an additional seven hundred units, that's going to be a big deal. It's going to become, it's going to come through the proper channels. There's going to be a lot of input, and I think that there might be some opportunities to, if that were proposed, there would be further opportunities to add affordable housing stock. So that being said, I'm not in support of this because I don't like removing the prohibition on children under the age of eighteen, and I'm maybe not that concerned about unfriendly fortyBs because I think that there's, I think there's a lot of room in our existing housing stock.
On my right?
Ed Harrow, Eighth Spring Lane. One question on the nine thousand dollar annual payment. So the developer is responsible to some point until such time as the developer goes bankrupt? Or passes it to the homeowners' association? Could the homeowners' association also go bankrupt?
Attorney Mieres.
I'm not here to vouch for the legal, the financial viability of anybody. Everyone is entitled, in the right circumstances, to go bankrupt. And when that happens, their obligations under existing agreements will be adjudicated by a bankruptcy judge. It doesn't mean just because you go bankrupt that you are free of all of your obligations. I'm not a bankruptcy lawyer, though, so I can't tell you all of the possible options. But absolutely, developers go bankrupt from time to time, as do homeowners' associations.
Thank you. On my left?
William Simpson, Five Constitution. You keep mentioning the nine thousand dollar payment, kicking in at the fourth child rather than the second or even the third child. A simple, something or other question would be, well, who's stuck paying for the first three of each one of these hundred and eighty? And then there's this stuff about, well, actually, the homeowner association is going to pay that, that nine thousand. It feels to me like the developer is getting out of this scot-free, as usual.
I think there's some confusion here as to whether it's three in a household or three in the senior housing. It's three in the entire senior housing, correct?
That's correct.
Yes. So we're not, do you understand that? So let's say there are a hundred children in the senior housing. Only the first three will not carry a payment with them. The other ninety-seven will. At this moment, it is the developer's responsibility. So let's, next questioner.
Anne Matina, forty, East Drew Road. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to Ms. Kramer. I'm just wondering, Muriel, how did we get here? I am having flashbacks, nightmares from two thousand and fifteen when we went through all of that with the vote, and it only won by one vote. And I remember this was originally supposed to be retail property, and the developer came to us and said he couldn't sell the retail property, and put on a very elaborate presentation for us all regarding the over fifty-five housing. Did we not know that the state had this prohibition against children? That they, the prohibition that you're talking about, that it wouldn't count towards the state's affordable housing inventory?
Thank you for your question, Ms. Matina. Through you, Mr. Moderator. So, yes, it did pass by a close vote. I think that's a piece of sort of the emotional background. It is a legal vote, and it's been certified, and we have moved forward. And I don't think that we're the only community in this particular fix. I don't know whether the state guidelines changed or not, or whether it just simply didn't get caught by attorneys during the time of review. But developers' attorneys looked at it, our attorneys looked at it, the state attorney general looked at it. So I don't, it's less important to, you know, find out who let us down, if that's what the question is. But more important to understand that we are in a position where, you know, the town has ownership for the difficulty as well as the developer, and we are really looking for a way forward that doesn't take us through the judicial process, because that won't turn out in anybody's best interest.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
On my right?
Jerry Kazanjin, twenty-nine Elizabeth Road. My question echoes a question that came up a few minutes ago, and I'm seeking some clarification likely from Attorney Mieres. And specifically, is there any chance that the state will continue to reject the allocation of these affordable units because of an argument that that nine thousand dollar fee is maybe inducing the developer to engage in discriminatory housing practices by not wanting to sell to someone with school-aged children?
Well, at present, DHCD looks at any deed restriction and any requirements of whatever permit there is for the project, in this case, the special permit. Both of those contain this prohibition against children under eighteen. So as long as those are there, that's what they're going to look at. If those are removed, I have no basis for concluding that they would look at anything else.
So a simple follow-up, do we know that they won't look at anything else? Or we just don't know how it will...
Well, they don't generally ask for anything else. That's what they look at. You know, if somebody were to appear before the DHCD and argue that the units still don't qualify, I guess we'll have to deal with that at the time. But that's, at the present time, what they look at is the provisions of any special permit or comprehensive permit that has been issued and any deed restrictions that have been recorded.
Thank you.
On my left?
Hi, Jen Devlin, Sixth Rice Street. So in terms of a solution, because that's what you sort of prefaced this...
Have you spoken to this article already?
Uh, yes.
Okay. We need to take people who have not yet.
Diane Camberlis, twenty-one Ash Street. Some of this is a little complicated, and I hear people around me saying, what is forty-B? What is this about? And the woman that was ahead of me, I thought she was asking the question, how did we get here? Because I have the thought about how we got here, and I want to share my understanding, and then please correct me if I'm incorrect, because I think it's relevant. Are we not in this situation because we were below our affordable housing and therefore big developers came in and had the opportunity to put units in and do it in such a way that wouldn't necessarily be beneficial to the town? And because they could circumvent some of the town's rules because of forty-B? So the point, the point is that if our housing numbers increase, then our percentage of affordable housing goes down. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So if that happens, then we're back in the same position that we started in with having to have those big developers come back in and put in new developments until we get back up to that threshold. So my concern is that if we end up adding more housing units, we'll be vulnerable again like we were prior to Legacy Farm and Madera being put in.
So just to be clear, that is a valid concern. That's the global concern. You know, the town is better protected if our housing stock includes greater than ten percent of affordable units. And the Legacy Farms development was predicated on them helping us actually reach our ten percent and maintain our ten percent. We are currently at fourteen percent, I believe. And for people who might not know, top level, making sure that we stay over our ten percent housing stock minimum of affordable available units does protect us from a so-called unfriendly forty-B development whereby developers can circumvent some of the existing zoning and put in developments that are not necessarily what Hopkinton would feel is most attractive. So it is beneficial from that perspective to have over the ten percent, certainly. And it's always been, this development globally at Legacy Farms has always been predicated on that ratio being maintained.
Has there ever been one that was put in, a forty-B that has been put in recently?
Well, that's not within the scope of the article at this point. On my right? On my right.
Jerry Tuitt, 4 Price Street. That lady just drew out the fact I wanted to get, we're at 14% affordable housing. We want to stay above 10%. So apparently, we have a cushion of something like 600 or 700 new units. So the press is to stay above 10%. If we get this tonight, we get an influx of students potentially in our school system, a big influx. If we go for Article 37, it gives us some time to figure this thing out while we're building houses up to 600 and 700 and using up that extra 4%, 4%. This seems like a knee-jerk here that could cost us a lot in the school system. I don't know which way I'm going to go on the vote, but that 14% is critical in the thinking. Thank you.
Yeah. Just to be clear, that the development that was, was approved at town meeting and has been permitted requires 10% affordable housing. So, we really do need Article 36 and 37, or one of them, just so people understand.
Two things. One, can you clarify, Muriel, as to the action that Planning Board took with respect to its recommendation on this article?
Yes. So the, the first zoning advisory committee recommended this article unanimously, and the Planning Board voted in its majority to support this article, Article 36.
And then Mr. Mari, Attorney Marias wanted to make a clarification as well.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to clarify about that 14% number, because it's a little bit misleading to think that we have a full 4%, or that we're almost 40, or we're over 40% above what we need to have. So the, the 10% is calculated based on the number of dwelling units that existed at the time of the last federal census, so back in 2010. That's the denominator. So all of the, the units that have been added to the inventory during that time are added to the numerator, and that's why 14%, that's how we've gotten to 14%. When the next census comes out, the number of residences in Hopkinton will jump considerably, and that's why people are worried about whether it might fall below 10%.
Thank you.
It, it's also true that the planning department, the land use department, does track that. So the number should be fairly current.
Mr. Weisman.
Ken Weisman, 145 Ash Street. Speaking as a former chairman of the Planning Board, I'd like to refresh Town Meeting's memory of one we approved this. I believe the number, and I could be wrong on this, was a million eight, or was a closer, maybe a little bit higher, of net taxes over the services we were expecting to provide for this area. This is what the study did at the time. So I'm going to submit to you, three, four students, when you're getting a million, million eight over and above your services, is small potatoes. This is a good, good cash cow for the town of Hopkinton. That's why we're talking about underrides. Now, I would also submit that when we did the study, that we didn't think that these condos would sell for as much as they are. I'm amazed all the time what they are. The original cash cow positive legacy farms had, I believe, condo prices in the $300,000 range, and they're selling for $500,000, $600,000. That's why all the money's coming in. It's a desirable place to live, and a lot of people are paying top dollar for these places. And we're getting a couple more kids, but we're getting millions more than what we thought we were going to get. That's why we have this underride coming around.
And so you're in favor of Article 36?
So I'm in, I'm in, I am in favor of Article 36. I think we got to keep the, the affordable unit numbers right at 10%. We're pretty good shape for the next census, but I'm, was always thinking about 20, 29 census.
On my right.
Christina Beck, 11 Valley Wood Road. I have two questions, but I think they're both quick. So, first, I'm curious what affordable means in this context. What's the price point of an affordable house?
So, it probably won't sound very affordable. It is a calculation, depending on, dependent on the area where the calculation comes forward.
Okay. And then, my second question is, if we're expecting the $9,000 to possibly, $9,000 per child, to possibly transfer to the housing association at some unspecified point in the future, then doesn't that make the affordable housing inherently unaffordable, if the residents are having to bear this burden that the developer actually set up in the first place?
That's, that's unknowable.
Okay. Well, it's the point. Thank you.
On my left.
Michelle Murdock, 53 School Street. I'm just a little bit confused on how we can vote on 36 when we haven't discussed 37, when you said that, and can you clarify, you, you said either they both have to be passed or one or the other? And I, I'm not getting how that's going to work. So if we were to approve this, does that negate discussion on 37?
So through the moderator, it does not. We can pass both. We do need one of these articles to pass in order for us to stay moderately in control of, of this process and this project, and, and, and go forward more smoothly. But 36 is a standalone article, 37 is a standalone article, they both can pass, and they don't cause problems for each other.
Okay. But they would, in effect, add more affordable housing if you did both of them versus one or the other?
So, through the moderator, I, it, they would not necessarily add more affordable housing. I think that the best way to think about this, passing both affords the developer and the town more flexibility in how to approach maintaining the affordability of those units.
Okay. And I just have one further follow-up question. What percentage of affordable homes are actually occupied, and how many are vacant?
I apologize. I don't think we have that information.
Okay. But I think there are vacant. I know you have to build them, but they end up with nobody in them.
On my right.
Robert Peterson, 178 Spring Street. If I'm a new developer in town, I think the most desirable thing to sell property in Hopkinton is the school system. If you look at any home listing for a property in Hopkinton, the first thing at the top of the listing is, oh, what a great school system. So if I'm a developer, how do I maximize my return on investment? I market my properties to people with kids that go to schools. Opening up, like, 180 homes to school-aged kids, like, with this kind of, like, limited window to negotiate that and plan that, is just very short-sighted, in my opinion. In the past, like, to take people down memory lane, like, we spent, as a town, Marathon School cost $43 million. We had to get another $4 million to add additional classrooms to bring that to $47 million. And then in the past, I think it was last year or maybe 18 months ago, we approved another article for $9 million to improve all the schools. So we're up to, people probably can quote me, but $57 million in the past few years. To take on this kind of burden without more planning, it just seems tremendously short-sighted to me. When, as a capitalist, and, like, my job, as my profession, is to grow revenue, like, as a builder, that's what I would do, is to try to position my assets to get the highest return on investment, and that's the school system. So I see no way that these don't have a lot more kids than predicted.
On my left.
Peter Edwards, 21 Cunningham Street. I have a lot of concern about how this arrangement is going to affect the association for here long-term. What you're saying is if there's 100 students that come from this association, you get a $900,000 a year payment for that association. So when the developer hands that back over to the association, their condo fee is going to jump up to $1,250 a month, which is instantly going to drive down the values of those units. So that would change the tax revenue right there. I just don't think it's a good idea. Thank you.
Matt Burdo, Three Revolutionary Way. So you said that one of these articles has to pass. What if both of them fail?
Excellent question, through the moderator. So, the reason that, we, we're in a fix with this, right? So the developers, it got a problem, and the town has a problem. We have a zoning article that can't be satisfied, and we have a permitted project that can't be built at the way that it's owned and the way that it's permitted. So I implore Town Meeting voters to contemplate being in charge of a solution, because otherwise, the solution will likely be decided by a judge.
Last question.
Oh, thanks. I didn't give up. So, to your point about the solution, are there existing developments or buildings or homes that have been built that could be turned into affordable housing units? So we wouldn't have to build new, they're already there?
So, yes. So, the, the affordability bylaw that we have, that the, the calculation that the Planning Board uses typically for all developments, that, you know, 10% of the development has to be affordable, allows for the developer, at the Planning Board's discretion, to make a payment in lieu of the affordable units, or to replicate affordable units elsewhere in town. So that could be new build, and that could be, of course, retrofitted units. That can be houses that are existing, or units that are existing. It could, for example, be units that might be, otherwise be lost from affordable stock. We have, we have some units that are at risk for being lost in the affordability calculation. So there, there's, there's a lot of flexibility. I will tell you that historically, the Planning Board has taken the payment. This current Planning Board has begun the conversation and has, in fact, imposed the opposite approach on a recent development. And I think that there is, there is certainly a conversation to be had about how successfully the town is positioned to use the money, if, if money comes in as a payment, in order to protect or bolster or build affordable units.
Okay. Can I just follow up real quick? And to that point about payments, should we decide to make it so that children under the age of 18 could live here? We do receive $9,000 per child after those first three, but our per pupil expenditure in the town of Hopkinton is just under $15,000 per child, so we're still going to be in the hole. But the taxes out of $500,000 house are about $10,000, right?
No cross-talk, please.
Okay.
Let's move to the right.
Mr. Moderator, I just have one question. Do we have any responsibility to the people who have already purchased in this development with the thought that they were purchasing in an, in an over-55, with most likely no children there? And, in fact, if the $9,000 fee gets brought to the, whatever you call it, Housing Association or whatever, they're now going to be responsible for kids they never expected to be in the houses they've already purchased.
So, through the moderator, it is true that the units that have been sold have been sold on the condition that there would be no children under 18, and the marketing materials, and that is a complicating factor, certainly for the developer. And I'll ask the attorney if it's a complicating factor for us.
You want to dive in, Attorney Marias?
No, I don't want to dive in, but, but as long as I'm in, yes, this is a very complicated situation. This was a, an arrangement that was agreed to by the developer and the town. It's set forth in the host community agreement. The zoning incorporates the, the requirement, the special permit incorporates the requirement, the deed restriction incorporates the requirement. Unraveling all of that is going to be complicated for the town. It will be simpler if the zoning is amended so that we have the flexibility to unravel that. If we don't amend the zoning, we're stuck. We can't, we can't agree to waive the under-18 requirement as long as it's, as long as it's in, required under the zoning. So, we've, it's, it's a very difficult situation, and this gives, this amendment would give the town officials an opportunity to try to work out a solution.
I would like to just add one thing, if I could, Mr. Moderator. Thank you for that, Mr. Marias. I just want to reiterate that the Planning Board and the developer have wrestled with this, and, through the public hearing process as well. And I just want to remind you that while we understand all the complicating factors, we did vote to support Article 36. And the developer, as much as they would like to maintain their under, no children under the age of 18, have agreed that they will ma, do, go through the effort necessary, should this pass, to comply with the zoning.
Mr. Sonnet.
Eric Sonnet, 60 Teresa Road. It appears to me that, two issues. One, you could get more school kids, and they'd be paid for over the long term on a risky basis. The second thing is, you could have less affordable housing, the 18 units, and from the projections through the next census, that would probably eat up half of our opportunity to be ahead of the 10%. Doing the math, if the 18 units were at market instead of affordable, and the delta between affordable unit and a market-based unit was $300,000, that would produce a taxable assessment increase for this project of $5.4 million. And if you use our current tax rate of 17%, that would produce revenue annually of $918,000 more than what we have now. I would recommend that we consider doing away with the 18 affordable units, and that probably takes an amendment here to change our zoning in that regard. But if we did that, would produce almost another million dollars' worth of revenue every year from now on. We wouldn't be messing around with more kids, we wouldn't be talking about nine grand from who-knows-where, and would have another million bucks in the bank. I'll leave that up to smarter people on how to do it, but I would sure go for the million bucks.
As a practical matter, and this is a question from Muriel, doesn't Article 37 accomplish what Eric has just outlined?
So that's a big maybe. So, we, we don't have the, I don't believe that we have the authority to eliminate the affordable housing. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a target, and, well, first of all, the 10% is, is a state mandate. That's, that's the goal, that's what we strive for. So, I suppose that we could do some fancy footwork, and that's for the attorneys to help us out with, and eliminate it here, but it is not the intent to lose the affordable housing, it is the intent to protect the affordable housing. That would be, certainly would be the, the vote of the Planning Board on both of these articles that are before you tonight.
On my right.
Carol Dever, 47 Chamberlain Street, and speaking to you now as both a member of ZAC and the Planning Board currently. When this article originally came up, and I, it's not my intention to muddy things here, I fully supported this after listening to the concerns of Town Meeting. I think I've changed my position. I think we would be better off leaving the restriction on under-18 children and passing Article 37.
On my left.
Tom Ding, 3 Werry Circle. I've heard a lot of good things here. Thank you, everybody, for bringing the questions and the answers. This is very helpful. I don't have that on 37. 37. It's outside the four corners, I can't ask about 37.
In this context, we can discuss both concepts together because they're so aligned.
I came up here to move to table the discussion of 36 until after 37. Would that do it? Or...
No, I think we're ready for a vote on this.
No, I'd like to hear about 37 if I could, with all, very helpful information has come about 36.
We can accommodate discussing, we can accommodate a presentation by Muriel on what 37 would do in contrast to what we have heard with respect to what 36 does. So Muriel, if you would expand on 37 a little bit.
Yes, if I could have slide number nine, there it is, Affordable Housing, Article 37. Another approach to the problem is that it would keep the prohibition on children in the development, the over 55 development. It allows the planning board to approve a payment in lieu of providing some or all of the units. Money would be deposited into the town's Affordable Housing Trust Fund if that's the option that we chose. It also allows the planning board to approve the creation of 18 affordable housing units elsewhere in town. The developer could buy existing units and resell them with state-approved affordable housing, a state-approved affordable housing deed rider, or construct new affordable housing units. The new units cannot be in legacy farms, they have reached the dwelling unit cap in the bylaw. This could result in more housing units in town. The only way it doesn't is if the existing units become affordable units. Any new units, obviously, that are going to be considered as affordable units could not prohibit children, and the new units could be over 55 or not.
Does that help to clarify an understanding of what Article 37 would do in contrast to Article 36? Go ahead.
Dave Paul, Planning Board. I just want people to pay attention to the first line because it is a bit deceiving. This article on its own would retain under 18 if 36 was voted down. If 36 is voted up, this article has no effect on the children 18, and it would still be removed.
That's correct.
Other questions on what 37 would do, which is different than what 36 is proposed to accomplish? I mean, if there's no other clarification that's necessary to help make a decision on Article 36. I'd like to end debate on 36, take a vote, and then move on to 37.
Mr. Moderator, I have a position that involves both 36 and 37, if I might be allowed to speak.
Go ahead.
Mira Arnot, 51 Teresa Road. If you want an affordable solution for the town, the people involved in the development, and for people who need affordable housing, I recommend you vote 36 down, so that would be a no vote on 36, and vote yes on 37. I attended the planning meetings on this and have heard all the good arguments here, but we need a solution. And we need one that's affordable for our schools, our people who live in the town, for the people who are going to buy into this development, and for the people who need affordable housing. So once, I will just state, I urge you to vote no on 36 and yes on 37. Thank you.
Okay, what we're looking for is if, at this point, is if people need any clarification between, of the differences between the solution presented in Article 36 and the solution presented in Article 37.
I have a question on 37.
Go ahead.
So if we vote down on 36, but we vote for 37... I'm sorry.
Name and address.
Tina Ottinger, 11 Nicholas Road. If we do not vote for 36, but we vote for 37, my understanding is the options are, there's a payment made or there's 18 new homes somewhere else. Who makes that decision? The planning board or the developer?
So the decision is the planning boards, and it could be a mix of both, just so you know. There's flexibility along that. It could be some payment and some units, it could be all payment and no units, it could be all units and no payment.
But the planning board gets to say, not the developer?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Again, is there further questions relating to further clarification?
I think so. Nancy Stevenson, 18 Hayden Row. You said that if they take these 18 away, we would have to find a way of incorporating them into the rest of the town, right? Because Legacy Farms is up to its capacity. But if 18 are being taken away, then there should be 18 slots in the regular part of Legacy Farms that they could be put into, right?
So through the moderator, I suppose that's true. It is true that there would be some discussion needed to figure out the numbers. So the other, there's definitely math involved. The other reality is if we take 18 units out of that development and we presume that they don't put in any market rate units, right, to make up, they're allowed to make, to put in 180, then we don't actually get 18 units because it's 18 less there. So there is, there are some calculations that need to happen. It is probably likelier that the units would be put throughout the town because the Osmot and the Legacy Farms development is so complex, but I suppose it could be true. I mean, the cap is the cap.
Yeah, it seems crazy.
But there, and different developers in there, right? So I suppose yes, but it would be complicated.
Well, I think I strongly recommend this one, and I hope that the planning board does everything in their power to keep that affordable housing stock up.
Can I ask Attorney Mieres to make a clarifying statement with respect to, under Article 37, who gets to make the choice as to whether it's money or units? Attorney Mieres?
So as an initial matter, it is the developer who gets to make that choice. If the choice is to develop new units, the location of those units has to be approved by the planning board. But the planning board doesn't get the choice of which of these two remedies a particular developer has to pursue.
So I'd like to ask a clarifying question because I believe that we were told that indeed it is a planning board decision. And it is, in fact, otherwise, a planning board decision for other developments. So that would be a typical process that we exercise elsewhere.
So, am I on?
Your honor.
I'm on. Okay. If the choice is made at the time that the special permit is being issued, it all gets rolled into the special permit decision. But I would caution the planning board against insisting on a cash payment or insisting on a construction of new housing and taking that option away from the developer in a special permit decision.
On my left.
Brian Douglas, 14 Greenwood Road. Just to educate me and perhaps maybe some other folks in the room, on Article 37, how much is the payment in lieu?
The question is whether we know what, if the developer chooses a payment in lieu of building affordable housing, what would that amount be?
Muriel, if I may? I consulted with Elaine earlier today.
I have it right here.
Okay.
It's estimated to be $210,000 per unit. All 18 would equal $3,780,000.
May I ask a follow-up question?
Quickly.
So have we done the math on Article 36 versus Article 37 to determine which is the best net positive financially for the town? That may help speed up the debate.
I think it will help slow down the debate. I think the silence that you're hearing is the answer is probably not.
It's, you know, this is a zoning question, so no, we did not do the calculation. The important thing, I think, for voters to keep in mind, and people have said it more eloquently than I will, is that this is a, the development at Legacy Farms and within the Osmot overlay district and including this, is mandated to be a net positive. And so that is something that we all have to maintain, developers and town alike. It has to be a net positive. But I don't have the comparison numbers, no.
Thank you.
On my right, again, looking for further clarification between the two approaches.
This is, more goes to a question of if both should fail.
Name and address.
Sorry, Jerry Kazanjin, 29 Elizabeth Road. So if Article 36 should fail, I think it's maybe safe to presume that Article 37 will pass, although this is a town meeting, you never know what's going to happen. So earlier it was mentioned that in that case, a judge would likely end up deciding because we'd end up in a 40B, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So this may be directed to Attorney Mieres. What would be the legal risk to the town, cost, things like that? And I think that maybe also needs to be part of the calculus if we're going to be trying to consider, you know, the net benefits between 36 and 37.
Do you want to guess, or should I just say unknowable? It's unknowable. On my left.
Russell Shade, 7 Summer Street. I'd like to move to stop discussion and vote on 36.
Okay, is there a second? There's a motion to end debate on this topic. All those in favor of ending debate on Article 36 signify by saying aye.
Aye!
Any opposed? Okay, we're ready for a vote on Article 36. The individual who moved to end debate, what's your address?
Mr. Moderator, just a point of order, can we have 36 up rather than 37 since that's what we're voting?
Is that the proper one, Muriel? Okay. All those in favor of Article 36, tried by voice to start, all those in favor of Article 36 signify by saying aye.
Aye!
All those opposed?
No!
Okay, that is clearly not a two-thirds majority, and so it fails. Article 37, Ms. Kramer?
Oh, yes, thank you. Run for the planning board, they said. It'll be fun, they said.
It all depends on where you're standing.
Article 37, the Osmot Affordable Housing, the motion. We move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the town of Hopkinton has set forth an Article 37 of the annual town meeting warrant. The planning board held a public hearing on the proposal on February 25th, March 25th, and April 8th. The planning board voted on April 8th and on May 2nd to recommend to the town meeting to adopt this change. We reconsidered the vote, just to be clear. We voted it on April 8th, which I think showed on the slide, and we revoted it on May 2nd. And it was a slightly different vote. We had one fewer, we had less people and more discussion.
I can see we're ready for a vote.
I have a question.
Oh darn.
Leah Butler Rafferty, 5 Meadowland Drive. I actually wanted to do it before because I think it's relevant. We were talking about 9,000 per child in the previous, right? Was that rolled in at all into the thoughts of cost of this? Because here, we're not restricting at all, so all 18 units can have as many kids as they want to have, correct?
Muriel, would you clarify that?
To be clear, the units in the development that are age-restricted, both somebody has to be over 55 and nobody can be under 18, that prohibits children. The 18 or whatever number of affordable units, if they're built elsewhere in town or recovered elsewhere in town, cannot be age-restricted. I think the bottom line or top line, the real important point is if it's going to be counted as affordable units, you can't tell people they can't have children.
And just a follow-up, but that means that even though the developer helps us to build them, they're no longer on the line for the 9,000 per kid, correct?
That's correct.
On my left, Mr. Hyman.
Mark Hyman, 12 Hidden Brick. I have a question for Attorney Mieres. I hope this is one you can answer. Having voted down Article 36, if the town also now chooses to vote down Article 37, would we clearly be in breach of the host community agreement, or is that unclear?
No, I don't think we'll be in breach of the host community agreement because the host community, because we will not have changed anything. Everything we've done has been in compliance with the host community agreement. The problem is not a breach of the host community agreement. The problem is that we have imposed a condition on the developer that the developer is incapable of complying with. And because we are requiring these 18 units to be on the SHI, and we're also requiring them to prohibit children under 18. And those two things are mutually exclusive at this point because DHCD has now interpreted the Fair Housing Act, which is a federal statute, to prohibit that. This is not the assumption that we made at the time. We have made, at the time we entered into this, everybody was in agreement that this arrangement would comply with the Fair Housing Act. So DHCD now has a different view, and we have, we would be in compliance. That's not our legal issue. Our legal issue is that we have required something that is not, is impossible to comply with. Thank you.
On my right, okay, Michael Demasio, 18 Hayden Row Street. This is really a follow-up question to the question that Mark just, okay, if 37 doesn't pass, you indicated that we would not be in conformance, and you used some acronym that I wasn't aware of.
SHI.
SHI, the subsidized housing inventory. That's the tally sheet that the state uses to determine whether you have 10% affordable housing.
Okay. Is it possible that these are still treated as affordable units but do not count toward our numbers? I don't think that's...
Well, the problem is that we define affordable as eligible to be included in the SHI. So no, the, no, that wouldn't work.
Okay. No, I was wondering because we kind of created this problem and if...
Well, to be fair, we, the developer and the town jointly created this problem.
Well, yes. And I was just wondering if the only downside would be that if we didn't count them, those 18 units, then our affordable units. But it doesn't sound like that's possible. Thank you. Go ahead.
Michael Riley, 200 West Main Street. A couple of questions. One is, if the 18 is pushed aside and it's developed at another time, another location, can they limit it to the two-bedroom, as they were in the, because that would limit the amount of impact on schools? Or is it limited, since it was part of that development? They were going to be two-bedroom affordable units. If they're built someplace else, can that restriction remain?
The answer to that, on my honor?
Yes.
The answer to that question is, it depends. If they put them all in a single, you know, building, then DHCD will have to approve the bedroom mix. And it's unlikely that DHCD would approve a bedroom mix that is all two bedrooms and under. It's possible, they have done it in the past, but they don't like to. So it depends. If there are 18 units that are all spread around all over town, and each one goes before DHCD individually, chances are that whatever the bedroom mix there is would probably pass muster.
I'd also like to say that I think the restriction, if people who have bought there or if they're going to be living there, that the points brought up by Eric and Ken are very valid. very valid, and I think that would really, if you live there, and all of a sudden you were told you have this huge association bill, it would definitely decrease the value of it, which would decrease the revenue to the town.
We just voted that down, so.
No, I'm glad, no, but I'm saying this is a much better option, and I'm voting for it. Thank you.
I can see we're ready for a vote on Article 37. If it's unanimous, we don't have to stand. All those in favor of Article 37 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it's unanimous, and so voted. Please, let's get one more article under our belt, Article 38. It's an easy one.
So, Article 38, the Osmond Restricted Land Definition, the motion. We move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the town of Hopkinton and set forth an Article 38 of the annual town meeting warrant. The planning board held a public hearing on the proposal on February 25th, 2019. The board voted on February 25th to recommend that the town meeting adopt the change. This is quite definitely a housekeeping article relative to the term "cultural uses" used in the Osmond District. The use is allowed in the district, but the definition and language pertaining to the restricted land doesn't include it. This change would make restricted land include that language for cultural uses. The article would insert the term in three places for consistency with the rest of the bylaw. The issue has come up in connection with a parcel that the town owns on East Main Street. It was donated to the town by Legacy Farms and is within the 500 acres of restricted land required by the bylaw. If the town decides to use the parcel for the International Marathon Center, which is under consideration, and cultural uses aren't expressly permitted in the restricted land, then any of the land used for the museum would have to be subtracted from the 500-acre count. This would mean that the developer would all of a sudden be noncompliant with the bylaw through no fault of their own. We don't think that that is fair, and we recommend that we approve this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Seeing none, oops. Which direction are you heading? Seeing none. Again, a unanimous vote saves us from standing once again. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let's stand on our way out. Those in favor, stand and hold up your card. If you're voting, please stay in the room, and if you're not, please exit.
Mr. Moderator, center front, 34.
Center front, 34. Center rear, 40.
Front left, 31.
Front left, 31. 57 on the right.
Left rear, 46.
Left rear, 36?
46.
46. Okay. All those opposed, please, if you're, if you've already voted, please take a seat so we can count those opposed. All those opposed, please rise and hold your cards up.
Center front, nothing.
Front left, zero.
Center rear, zero.
On the right, two.
On the stage, zero. 60, 91, 131, 131, and 131. 222 to two, I think that passes.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move that we adjourn the meeting until tomorrow evening.
So moved. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
See you tomorrow night, 7:00 PM.